We are unmuted.
Good evening. This is October 10th Select Board Meeting, and we're going to go directly to Executive Session. Could I have a motion, please?
I move that we enter Executive Session.
Well, we didn't... Yeah, okay.
Do you want me to do that?
Yeah.
I move that we enter Executive Session, Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Paragraph 21, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares, carla Police Unit Local 201.
And I need a roll call for a second. Sorry, second. Thank you. Now I need a roll call.
Arnold, I.
Right.
I.
Snell, I.
Okay, and we will...
Modell abstainer is not present.
David Modell is not... He'll be present at our Executive Session, however.
Okay.
Okay. And we will reconvene in open session, hopefully at 7 o'clock. But I'm there. Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the Select Board Tuesday, October 10th, 2023 Meeting here at the Town Hall. I believe we think our Wi-Fi is up or not. Okay, we do not have Wi-Fi here, so this meeting is being streamed. Are we on Zoom? Anyway, and we're still on Zoom. Okay. Tonight's agenda is as follows: Community Input, Appointments and Resignations, Appointment Policies, a discussion of Town Hall Personnel Structure, the Fall Town Meeting Discussion, Town Hall Hours Discussion, Town Administrator's Report, and a review of the Minutes and Warrants, Liaison Reports, and Community Input. And I'm going to call for Community Input. I just wanted to make a quick announcement beforehand, and that is that there were three lovely little bobcats in my yard a couple of days ago. So folks with animals might want to be careful before letting them out because those little critters are out there. Is there anybody else here for Community Input? If you... There's nobody in the audience, so if you are online...
Yeah, I'm in the audience.
Thanks for putting your hand up. Lana?
Hi. Sorry, I put the wrong signal up. Longhand signal. Just a quick question. I noticed that you have a conversation...
Before you start off, would you introduce yourself?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Lana Zamaro, 398 Lowell Street.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. I see that on the agenda Article 9 is up for conversation or discussion, and I don't know if I'm going to be able to pose a question during that discussion or if I should pose it now. Can you guide me on that?
You pose it now, Article 9?
Yes.
Okay.
You'd like me to pose it now?
Yeah.
Okay. It's a question, actually, that applies to all town employees appointed or elected, and that has to do with the performance evaluation. And I'd like to know what is done in terms of performance evaluation? And is there an opportunity, since these positions are all public-facing, for input from the public with regard to an evaluation?
Okay. Currently, it's an elected position.
We can answer the questions during that section.
Yeah, we'll answer that question during the section. Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else here for public input? Seeing none, we can go to Appointments and Resignations, which is on Page 2 of our packet.
Want me to make the motion?
You have it up. That would be great.
I move to appoint Gretchen Gallimore to the position of Executive Assistant, effective October 11th, 2023, pending successful salary negotiations and required hiring administration.
Second.
Any comments?
If Brian gave us a statement.
Yes, so we advertised this position internally, knowing that we had many candidates in town that might want to serve in this position and certainly have the qualifications. We were thrilled that Gretchen applied to this position. She's currently serving as the Assistant Town Clerk, the Assistant to the Library Director, a COAHS Driver, and also the DPW Clerk or Assistant, and then her other role is Webmaster for the town. So her... Include the ability to assist us with, we call it, local IT or website. She's got tons of knowledge about boards and committees work from her time on the Town Clerk, and she's touched many of the departments in terms of her experience. So for an Executive Assistant, I don't know that you could have a person who was better prepped to step into a role and assist us immediately. Previous to her employment here, she worked in the city of Lowell, not for the city, but for a food pantry, serving as the Executive Director of that. So she has tremendous amount of experience. We're thrilled to bring her to you as a candidate and believe that she would make an immediate impact.
Thank you.
Further? Yes. So Barney and I did join the interview process, and I agree with everything Ryan just said. I think that she'd be a great fit.
So do I. Excellent. Any other questions, comments? We don't have David online, so we can just do a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Closed. That was unanimous. Thank you.
Then I move to...
Go ahead.
...appoint Johnny Mello to the position of Heavy Equipment Operator, effective October 11th, 2023, pending successful salary negotiations and required hiring administration.
Second.
Any discussion on this appointment?
Just that I was able to receive a report from our Director, DPW Director Jim Hall, and then Aubrey served on this Hiring Committee as well. So we are very lucky in this hiring environment to find someone who has previous municipal experience to include just a tremendous amount of driving experience, which is important for the ability to immediately work for the DPW, especially with the winter pending. Believe it or not, we are headed towards winter. So to grab someone with this level of experience and this much enthusiasm coming to want to work for the town as a heavy equipment operator is a big win. So we're thrilled to add Johnny to our staff pending your appointment.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. That was unanimous. Thank you. Any community appointments? None, and no resignations? None. Okay. Appointment Policies, Page 9 of our packets, unfortunately.
Is Aubrey on the call? Is Aubrey there? And is there... Maybe not.
Hi, I'm here. I'm just on Jen's account, just for, you know, for now.
Sure. Do you want to just mention the two revisions that we made based on the last conversation with the Select Board?
Sure. The two revisions... Hold on, just let me pull that real quick for you. So we're adding the Select Board Liaison to also be in the loop of the process, and we also want to make sure that any vacancies that are open because somebody is ending their term should be advertised. So they would have to reapply to continue serving a new term. And one other addition that we adjusted is that if more than one person is interested in a volunteer position, the Select Board may choose to form a subcommittee, including no more than one Select Board member that would contact the interested volunteers and then make a recommendation to the Select Board for their approval, so that can help with that nomination process.
I think those two things are great. I do have a couple of questions. Just some... Just to make sure that I understand. In 4.A., I think it's saying this, but I just want to make sure because it says "of the appropriate year." But 4.A., if somebody is appointed midterm, they're basically complete... They're being appointed to complete the term of the person who was in it before. Is that what appropriate year means? I think what's happened in the past is sometimes we forget this, and we just go ahead and do another three-year term.
Right.
Just want to make sure that that's what appropriate year means.
Yeah, where... Sorry, I'm having trouble finding 4. I have a diff... Oh, this one. Okay, gotcha. There are two... Several of them in here.
I'm sorry. Under Terms of Volunteers.
Right. Yep, thanks. Do you think we need to clarify that, add something there to make that more clear?
Well, it just... In the next one, it says remainder of the term, which is why I called it out.
Right.
But if appropriate year, it means the same thing.
Yeah, but it's always better to be consistent in the way you talk about things. And that was the other thing I was... The other inconsistency is the difference between an opening and a vacancy. Was there... It seemed like there was a difference, and then it seemed like there wasn't a difference in one area. So I thought that maybe we should put that in the... In the definitions and/or use the same.
At the top, at the beginning.
Yeah.
My other thing was in Appointments of a New Volunteer under 5, the Subcommittee... Totally agree with the Subcommittee process, but I thought that we were going to kind of select ahead of time a group of people who would be doing this, and then kind of as something come up, pull in somebody from the committee that... Where the vacancy is. The way it reads here, it looks like we're recreating a committee every single time. That seems pretty onerous, and it'd be great if people were just used to this, and this is what they did. They were part of the selection committee. I think we even talked about that, like, doing outreach and things like that. So I thought we were building it into kind of more of a permanent committee with people pulled in from other things as we went along.
Yeah, that... I am comfortable with that. I can't remember the specifics of the conversation two weeks ago, but I thought that's how we did have it originally, and then there was some feeling that we didn't want to establish a permanent Subcommittee. But let's see what other people think on that. I'm comfortable with it being a permanent committee, so that, yeah, you don't have to keep.
Every single time, you have to get somebody up to speed if it's a different group every time, and we need to decide who's going to be on it, or...
Right.
We're going to need a committee to select the Subcommittee.
Yeah, yeah. I kind of agree that it should just be a standing working group, in fact.
Well, I think we concluded that it has to be a Subcommittee of the... Right? Didn't we have this conversation about a working group, and it wasn't appropriate?
Have this... Right. I guess it's not...
EA.
It's our decision at the end of the day, so, okay. But, yeah, all right. It would be the EA, probably, the Executive Assistant. One of us.
Yeah.
And whoever, whatever committee. So the third, if it's a committee of three, the third member is the one from the committee.
That's looking... That's filling the vacancy. Yeah.
It shouldn't be sleek. It shouldn't be a big committee.
And so it's the board that has the opening, they would just choose whoever it is that's going to participate in the conversation?
Yeah, they would.
So that would change depending on what board it was, but the other two would stay the same?
Unless we always, you know, specify the Chair of the Committee, but then the Chair might be the person who's going out, whose vacancy is being filled. So I don't think you want to specify just a member of that committee.
It's fine to me. Aubrey, do you have any comment on this?
That makes sense, as long as we, you know, hold it appropriately, and it probably still has to be public.
Oh, yeah, right. But it might be during the day, you know?
Right, correct.
David, did you have any comments?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm late, late. Unfortunately, got the short straw. Pick up and drop off duty. The... Which piece of this are you on right now? You're on the Committee?
On Page 3, the part in blue.
Okay, good. Okay.
Appointment of a New Volunteer.
Okay, so the subject is to have a standing... What Nathan's advocating is having a standing committee, so you don't have to reinvent the wheel.
And then rotating in, depending upon the committee the appointment is needed for, somebody from...
One thing of a... Oh, go ahead. I thought the top section that you have in yellow would... Okay. Can you hear me, Aubrey? And can you scroll up to the top section, which is highlighted?
Right. I'm controlling the screen share, but I can hear you now.
Okay.
You didn't have to tell them. They just thought it was magic.
Oh, all right. Well, actually Barney tried to scroll on your thing and couldn't get it done, so she assumed that it was Aubrey's. I was just saying that I thought this whole process part should drop down to the second scroll highlight thing because it's... Instead of having to repeat it again. So, you know, if you have to say "refer to it," means that it wasn't in the right spot to begin with. So the other thing was, you know, sometimes you... The first sentence, "Staff Responsibility, Executive Assistant, EA, to Select Board manages." And so I read it about four times to try to understand why the Executive Assistant... It would go from the Executive Assistant to the Select Board because that EA confused me. So the Executive Assistant...
That's not really a sentence, is it? So it needs to be made into...
Yeah, yeah, right. Okay, so there's some polishing. And I then also was wondering, what is this? Is this a policy that will be, you know... Where will it be posted? Who is the audience? Is this, you know... So I wasn't quite sure what this was totally intending to be, so...
It's really two policies. I think where you're going, Kate, was where I... There's a policy or there's a procedure. I don't know. There's a procedure to appoint. My advice is to call them groups, and group means any of those things, non-elected things. And they all report to the Select Board, and there's a policy about that, and there's a policy about the mission and rejuvenating the mission and forming a new one and all that stuff. And then there's the procedure of appointing members and all the case-by-case stuff, like if it's a recurring member and they have to tell before June, you know, 1st and blah-bitty blah, and then if there's more than one for a slot. And so there's a whole bunch of things, and they just need to be kind of a little more orderly and sequential. So again, without changing anything, I think I can clean it up and make it clearer. But that's my... That's the way I looked at it.
Aubrey, shall we turn this over to David?
Well, I'd like to just say that this has been in front of a number of weeks, right?
Yeah.
And we provided comments last time. I'm not sure that the board should be editing every document that comes through. I think that we have professionals, and I think if we said, "This is it." We, you know, if there are any other comments, you know... I did make one comment outside of what was changed, but my biggest comment was something that had just been added to this. I think it's pretty close to done if we all agree, and we could say, "Put it in final format for one last..." We'll just put it in final format. I think, you know, there's always room for improvement for everything, but I think we need to move on, and we can't be wordsmithing every document. That's my opinion.
Actually, we are going to be. Don't we have Apollo... I thought we were going to start that policy review. We would wordsmith policy documents.
I would hope that we're looking at the content of it and not...
Of course, but it should be clear. It should be clear. Whatever we write and put out, I believe, should be clear.
Why don't we... Aubrey, if this makes sense to you, you could, you know, take the input you've heard tonight and some of the sort of tightening it up or making it clearer, do a rewrite. I also... This is sort of a new thought I had, but, you know, I was thinking about, in particular, the change about saying that any volunteer that is currently serving on a board and their term is up, we're now saying they have to reapply, which is a change, significant change. That I would like to have a period where we send this out to the boards and committees and let them... I don't know how they want to deal with it, but if they want to discuss it, but just give us some feedback before we just say willy-nilly, "This is the way it has to be," you know?
Actually, the next Board, All Board Chairs Meeting would be an appropriate place to discuss this, I think.
Yeah, but we could... The Select Board could, you know, finally... We could say, "Here's the form... Here's our final version."
As our draft, bring it to your boards if anybody...
Yeah, give us input if you have any feedback. Yeah.
Yeah. I think we need to start socializing it. I don't, you know, we don't... It doesn't have to be perfect to be socialized, but certainly these ideas and, you know... And more input, because, you know, there's five of us, and there's, you know, how many times? Of them, and they have ideas I'm sure that they could bring to us that we haven't thought of, would help us to... For the recruitment area, so...
I think one of the really great parts of this document that we got was the org chart for the town.
Say it again?
The org chart for the town at the bottom of it?
Oh, yeah.
I thought that was great. I did have a question. I didn't realize that Communications didn't report to the Police Chief.
So Communications, by past practice, reports to both Chiefs, but they're appointed by you.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
I have a... I just have one kind of actual process question. In 4.A. and B., it says if someone's appointed in midterm, their term would end 6:30 of the appropriate year, I imagine. Well, I'm just trying to resolve A. and B. In other words, are A. and B. really the same thing?
Yeah, Nathan had brought that up.
Okay, so did you resolve it?
I didn't bring up the actual thing that you're saying. I assumed that they weren't the same thing. And I just said that B., you know, I was asking if B. was that they would serve the remainder of the term for whoever was the...
That's what I would assume, right.
Yes.
But what's A. then? What is the case of A. if it's not B.? We add a member in the middle of... I don't understand A. then.
Or A.
My understanding is that your term would either end on June 30th of a year or you would complete the term. So your term would end at June 30th of the year of your term of completion. So if you were appointed until 2024, you were cut off right now. You would go until June 30th. If it's 2025, you'd go around again to June 30th.
I still don't understand the distinction between A. and B. If somebody chooses not to complete their term, then somebody else is appointed, and they complete, like what Nathan said, they complete the term that they fill, just like it works in the Congress.
Yeah.
And then you...
Those are the inverse, right? One is... It depends upon who they're talking about. One is what it means for the person coming in, and one is what it means for... You know, one is... I can't explain it.
Yeah, I think right. I think we can zero it in. We can make one comment, one bullet out of those two.
I guess I do... I found my notes. Number 2 and number 5 seem mutually... Don't seem to jibe. So in number 2, under the Appointment of a New Volunteer, it says that there's more than one person interested in a single vacancy, the relevant board will consider all interested parties and may arrange for an interview. And the board may vote to recommend one of the interested residents and will provide to the EA a letter of recommendation, including the length of term. And then in 5, it says, "If more than one person is interested in a volunteer position, the Select Board may choose to form a Subcommittee, including no more than one Select Board member that would contact the interested volunteers and then make a recommendation to the Select Board for their approval." So I think we have to decide which one it is because it's confusing.
Didn't we go with Nathan's version of it?
Just wanted... That what we were talking about?
Yeah, so would that number 2, under Appointment of a New Volunteer, be changed? So that the... I guess what we're saying is that the relevant board would not do an interview?
That's right.
Right?
Yeah. So we've decided it's number 5. Well, that's... But it's still in here, so that's... Want to make sure that it gets written properly.
And that's probably another thing we want to make sure that the boards and committees understand is in here, right? Because that's a big change.
The only other thing that I asked about last time, and which was not included in here, is if somebody had already served two terms, and especially if there are other people that are interested in an opening, we give preference, you know, is there preference to... Because in certain cases, you may want to give preference to somebody that's been there for a while or continuity or whatever. But then there are other times where, you know, they need to make way for the new member to come in. So I don't know if we wanted to address any sort of term limit or, you know, after two terms, things are different or...
We have... Yeah, I mean, we have term limits in FinCom. Is that statutory?
It's by bylaw.
Bylaw. For us, only for carla, not statewide. And then... But other ones, we don't have term limits. Do we have any other boards or term limits?
Nothing I'm aware of.
In effect, with the change under number 5, .5, under Appointment of a New Volunteer, aren't we in effect by asking existing members whose term is up, asking them to reapply? Aren't we, in a sense, Kate, opening it up then to new people? And it's... It'll, right, that that... I mean, that was part of our intent, was to make it clear that new volunteers would have an opportunity to be considered in sort of in an equal...
Yeah.
Equal opportunity to be considered.
It allows the current board or current group at that time to determine for themselves if it's more important to have the continuity versus the new member, and that may change or fluctuate depending on the situation. So I think giving that flexibility is important. rather than a term limit in this case.
I guess I'm just saying that if somebody's been there for two, for two terms and they say they want to renew and they even apply, and there's a second person that also wants to apply, maybe we want to give preference to the new person at a certain point or, you know.
Right. And what I'm saying is that the select board at that point in time may feel differently than we feel right now about giving that. And so I'd almost leave that up to the next generation to decide or, you know, I think.
I think people also should read the conquered one because it's very, very complete and they have, they've covered things like that and they even have, you know, rules about, you know, sometimes you don't want, you do want the person to be there more in the outline why and when. And so I think, you know, at not this iteration possibly, but I think as we move on, we may want to embroider on some of these policies. Let's put it that way, just to make everything, you know, more clear.
Is there, is there a problem that we're trying to solve is, do we have a lot of people that are in a long time and, and other people are being blocked from getting in?
We don't know because we've never had, given them, we've never told them there was an opening. So people haven't volunteered for things because they haven't been, it's never been an opening.
And we did get a little feedback, excuse me. I can't remember whether it was two, three years ago. I don't, I don't want to mention specifics, but I think it was community input actually where we heard from a resident who felt that um an exist, a committee was, they were choosing who they wanted to have on the committee and, and not opening it up to new people.
So I think a step in the direction of fixing that is this new committee that we're creating in this document.
Yeah. And I, I think we should also have a statement in here somewhere about that. We're also looking for the most qualified, you know, we, certainly we want people who are stepping up, but then we're also looking for qualified individuals. So for instance, I don't know, we, we prefer to have, you know, engineers and construction people on MFC over um, I don't know what, a nurse.
You're speaking like, you're speaking like we have an overwhelming bunch of volunteers.
Given a choice, the thing is where it's making a statement about who we would like to see volunteers well. And that is, you know, unfortunately.
I don't know about that because, you know, it is citizen government, right? I mean, the point is if you're interested enough, you could have a, you know, a burning passion for buildings without being in the trade at all and you'd be very committed because you, you know. So I don't know that that's needed, at least in my opinion.
Let's wait and see is my, hang on. We, as Nathan said, let's, if there's a problem, we can solve it. But if there's not.
I mean, the idea of having a committee is a good one and that takes all of that into account. If, if the board members who are on that want to make the case for continuity of Mr. X, they will make it, right? And if somebody wants to make a case for a neophyte who's passionate or an experience, they'll make it, you know? I mean, that's fine, right?
All right.
And let's hope we have that problem of more than one person vying for a spot, right?
Right.
All right. Um, so I think we're in good shape with this. I think you're gonna just polish up what we just talked about tonight. Uh, I can send you my, my notes if you want and Aubrey's probably taken notes. And that'll get presented at our next chair, all chairs meeting. Um, for comment and do we, and the next time we see it, it should have a signature block at the bottom for us to adopt.
Okay.
As a, as a policy.
This is.
Or do you want to, well, is it, is that what this was intended to be?
Well, remember, we just, we said we needed to clarify, we needed to have something written that was clear about how you got onto boards and.
Yeah, I, I think it should be a policy. I think all these things should be in a central.
That's the point in policy and subject. Yeah. So.
It does, but then it also, you know, um, it also has this overview thing. So I think the overview thing then, it should be written as a policy.
Right.
This is not a policy as it stands.
Remember, yeah, this um, we, this, the overview part was way back, probably.
Yes.
Eight meetings ago, right? When we had, we said we're gonna do this in two meetings, part A, part B.
Right.
So yeah, that could all come out of there.
Well, it's good to have framing language. Pieces of it belong in there, but it leads to a larger question, which we don't have to debate today, but do we have a, do we have guidance for ourselves on policies versus procedures? I mean, that seems like something we ought to be, well, because again, I say what I said earlier. I mean, and it's not just here. We do it a lot, right? We're, we're broad in certain ways and we're prescriptive in other ways. So I don't know if that's something we ought to sometime.
I think the handbook should be entitled policies and procedures.
But do you disaggregate them or you have a policy and the procedure to implement the policy?
Yeah, well, if you need to have a procedure.
If you need, yeah.
Yeah. Right. Okay. Um, let me check my time. Where are we?
Is there something on the organizational chart that we were gonna discuss?
Employees, the employee um organizational chart. Ryan, wanna take over on this?
Yeah. So this has come up a few.
Just for the people. While you're doing that, I will say, I just, I thought it was really exciting to see this on paper because I remember when I first got on the select board, I asked that question, do we have a staff organizational chart? And none existed. So.
Oh, actually it existed before this. I've seen it. Yeah.
Well, the one, anyway, nevermind. It's a good thing to have.
You just can't print it. I mean, if you print it, you can't read it.
So um, there are sub-organizations for things like police, library and other large units. The, the main point in terms of the legend is that anyone with an arrow from a green bubble is appointed by that, that particular board. So they would have appointment function for that particular employee. So it demonstrates the variance amongst the employees in the town, who's appointed by what. So anyone that's not specifically called out by a green bubble, and I'll be more specific. So the library trustees appoints the library director and everyone under the library director by statute. If they're not under a bubble, then they're appointed by you. So one thing that.
What about town clerk?
Uh, town clerk is appointed, yeah. Elected.
Oops.
Yeah. Where is the town clerk?
So the town clerk that, yeah, at least for the moment that needs.
It'd be a green box. Yeah. That was not. So the, the idea here that, that I would like to discuss with the board is at what level of employee that you appoint? Cause you've, you've talked a couple of times about delegating authority to the town administrator and then to the assistant town administrator for presenting people to you for appointment. And it's really important that we present these people correctly. And a couple of the challenges that exist with the appointments are we almost, there's not a lot of employees that want to come before you without some notion that they might get the job. Because once they become in front of you, then they have to tell their employers and their family and it becomes very public. So while we are public people, that initial recruitment of employees, uh, it causes some difficulty the employment process that exists currently. And then there's another tier of people who, who don't want to come before you unless there's some type of job offer. So we've solved that by offering people a job contingent on the select board approval with you having the final, the final veto. So this, many communities struggle with, with this appointment process. So what we're looking for, Aubrey and I, is um, just feedback from you or more definitive, this is the level of employee and this is how we would like you to bring that level of employee to us. Whether one of you serves on the hiring committee, whether you um, whether you want the resume, a picture, you want them to be here to meet them, um, and then which employees are above us that you would appoint directly. And we've talked in the past about obviously my position, uh, potentially Aubrey's. And then the chiefs would be direct appointments and, and part of your process, people that expect to be publicly vetted. So this chart is here to kind of give you, Travis told me I should put this in here, give you, so you could draw a line that would say, here is what employees um, you, you would like to bring and how. So the reason this matters is we spend a lot of, we don't have a lot of time at these meetings and we spend a lot of time prepping and we just want to make sure we're bringing you everything you need to make a decision and you're comfortable so that uh, we don't lose an employee or, or otherwise because of the administration of it.
Okay. So what?
Sounds like you need another color.
Yeah, I was thinking, and we did too.
So you, to designate, you mean where the select board wants to um, have an active role in the hiring process? Right? That's what you're suggesting with the other color? Yeah.
Is it active or is it your hire? I, for example, in the, I agree with what, you know, Ryan's saying, don't want confusion. Actually, in, we don't have it at the moment, but under CPS, the business director is the hire of the committee, even though it ends up reporting to a superintendent. Why that is, I don't know, but that's a thing. I think it's statewide. So it's the hire, the committee is responsible, if I'm correct, I mean.
This is the school committee?
Yeah, the school committee is responsible for hiring the business director and then turns it over to the superintendent. So are we responsible, for example, to hire the chief, police chief or fire chief? Or are we to just rubber, you know, to interview or accept or?
Statutorily.
Oh, statutorily or either. I mean, it's a difference between what Barney said, getting involved. Like we could say, we want to be involved in the hiring of the ATA or the town planner and that's fine. We could just say that. I don't know. We have to put out an org chart. But there are certain ones that, that either statutorily or by our own policy, we want to be the hiring authority.
Correct.
That's what I'm asking.
Correct.
I, this is a real balance of trying to figure out how much time is a select board? We want to invest in the personnel and delving into them and interviewing them and versus like pulling ourselves out and letting that.
No, I agree. Pre-COVID, we didn't have this problem. There was absolutely no, I don't remember any turnover.
Problem of what?
Five years.
A number of, we did a number of interviews. Um, I think typically, you know, if it was for a very senior role, we interviewed more than one person. But for the most part, we just chatted with the person that was being appointed. Yeah, you know, I completely see what you're saying, Ryan. I mean, it's one of the nasty things, I guess, about, you know, working for government is everything is public. But I think that it would make sense for us to hit a level where we're saying, okay, we're not gonna do it. Some of these I don't, I don't think we can, like, I don't think we have any authority over schools, right? Um, so that's, that's in their own thing. Um, is this saying that like the library director, we don't have any say over, right?
That's correct.
Do we have any director say over the health agent?
No.
No.
Okay. And so we don't have any say over the town planner or the planning assistant?
Depends on how you define the job, but no.
Okay. And we don't, uh, the, the bubbles are in, so I'm assuming that the board of assessors doesn't just do the assessing assistant, it's also the assessing director?
Actually, it's interesting. So by statute, the assessing director is your appointment, but the assistant is the board of assessors.
That's on purpose, how it is here.
Interesting.
So, uh, again, the assessing director is.
Is your appointment, but the assistant is the board of assessors.
Okay.
Or the assessing staff.
Is that, is that why the BOA is below the line? Ah, okay.
So I think, I think, you know, it, it seems like, you know, fire, fire chief, we only appoint the chief, nobody else. But some of these are pretty easy. Um, animal inspection has never really been a problem, but you know, we just appoint whenever we appoint everybody else, but we don't have to do that. Um, I'm just stating my.
We'd still be appointing them. I think the question at hand is how much do we stick our oar in before they're brought to the board for the appointment?
Well, I thought we were delegating the appointing authority.
You can't.
Okay.
But if we know what, how to bring them to for appointment, at what level, it could be more, it could be more efficient. It could be less efficient depending on.
Okay. Maybe we could just start with the most obvious ones, you know, that we want to keep the top.
Police and fire and town administrator.
So if that's, okay, so those three. I think for, for me, I think it's that top row of the ones that we have the ability to do it.
And we actually have already decided we wanted the deputy chief, which was in the second row.
When you say top row, you mean um, the long line, the long line starting with the police chief?
Police communications.
Ending with IT director?
Yeah. I think we have the top row. I'm, you know, above the long line, I think that should, you know.
I think some of those we, no, I don't think we should be doing some of those.
I think we could go through name or position by position and try and narrow it down.
Okay.
Can I say one thing before we start that?
Yeah.
Is, I, I agree with it. And if we decide we don't want to be the authority, I'll just use COA director as an example, might not be the right one. In the case of the current COA director, because it was an internal assignment, we can still say, we'd like to interview her. I mean, we don't have to be so prescriptive that we're always boxed in, but we don't, you know what I'm saying? That there, there are cases where we could just indicate to the TA that we like to be involved. If we know it's sort of a, you know, if it's not the case where it has to be public and they have to quit their job and all this jazz, right?
What, is that tied with what you're asking?
Yeah. So picture, picture um, when Joan left. You go to your new HR director, Aubrey, and they say, how could, how do we hire this person? The first thing that Aubrey has to do right now is to go back to you and say, how do you want to hire this person? So it slows it down uh, anywhere from one day to 14 days, depending on where we are in the meeting cycle, just to get your opinion on who to be on the hire, et cetera. So if she knew generally that a department head involves a select board member, a member of the committee, her or me, this, this hiring process, we could start that process and get it going for you. Um, unless you indicate to us otherwise that you would like to use something that, something different for this particular person. But what we're finding is, as each one comes up, you're thinking about how we want to do it. And I, I think if we did it ahead of time, it could prevent some of this uh, issue with hiring.
In our policy and procedure book, so that everybody would know.
And some committees um, think that they have hiring authority and some don't because it's just, it's just never been talked about this way. So um, that can get awkward for staff because we have to say, what you're doing needs to stop because the select board has to weigh in. And that's not really what we should be doing because the, the volunteers and the residents should be deciding policy, not us. So.
So we're not deciding which ones do we want to be involved in. We're deciding what is the process for each of these types of hires.
Yes, and which high, which, which positions go into which bucket?
Right.
Yeah.
And if we go back to the ones we just talked about, police, fire and TA, I think are pretty clear that we want to be the, you know, total authority on that and total involvement as far as setting up a committee, doing a process. But are there any others?
TA being town administrator?
Town administrator, TA, yeah. And the question is, are there, I, I just think is the easiest way to approach this. Are there any others at that level that the select board would want that same level of involvement where we're going to do a public process and, you know, these are by, also those three positions are ones that we review annually or should be reviewed.
Yes.
Right.
So a question to think about and not to decide tonight is if we do move the town clerk to an appointed position, I would say that should be in that bucket as well, but obviously not presently.
Right. Well, I still think we can go through um, the list and say, tier one, tier two and tier three, or is it, are, are there only two tiers of?
Tier one means?
Tier one means that we really want hands-on, the select board wants hands-on. And I think we have already some agreement around police chief, fire chief and town administrator. And I'm putting stars on those boxes. Are there any others that we really feel, and I, I mean personally, I think, well, I don't know about COA, HS, no, is that?
Well, you have to define tier two before we can answer that. Tier two is we'd like to have involvement if it's not too inconvenient?
So tier one means we're putting together a committee, we're interviewing, it's a public process. At some point, it becomes a public process here, like it was when Ryan was hired.
Correct.
And it is the, I guess, sole and what do they use, what are the words? The sole authority of the select board to select.
Sole authority of the.
To make the final select.
Yes.
I mean, you can involve other people, but it's our hire, right? That's, and I don't know. And on that list, perhaps town council. Now, a lot of times because we, we appoint the incumbent, it's not really an issue. But if we were to, for whatever reason, need a new town council, I'm trying to look for things that we really want independence from.
Yeah, that's almost a different one though, because it's a contractual thing. So that's putting it back out to bid and, yeah.
Okay.
But also the credentials and all that jazz, right?
So, so let's go through the list, because I think we can't do this without going through the list. Communications.
What does tier two mean?
Here, uh, tier two is we don't, is we're a step away. Final blessing and the huh?
Final blessing?
This is, this is, I'd like to turn help. So the this would probably look like a select board members on the hiring committee um selected to to serve on the hiring committee, someone from the executive office, and someone from the relevant committee or board, if necessary, at a minimum, and maybe even a resident to to select that. So the the recommendation that comes to the select board, I think, would be pretty powerful, having all of those people involved. So the, the, really, the input is in the the hiring process, not necessarily here at the table.
Right, but how do you get out of the 14-day delay that you articulated? So if you have an opening tomorrow, oh, this is a bad time, because I'm meeting, but let's just pretend. If you had an opening tomorrow, you need to get us to volunteer a together that little committee, and then you have to wait a whole cycle to get that done, or?
That.
For this, I I think the tier two is you create the hiring committee, right?
What if we made it that the um uh assistant town administrator is our HR personnel person for for the non-top level?
Yeah, yeah.
Right, that they're they're um authorized to put together a whatever we want to call it, a uh.
Yeah, no, I I'm with you there. I'm just, I'm stubbing my toe on the need for a select board member. Because if you add that criteria, then we still have to wait for the next meeting to.
Unless, what if we? Unless we pre-select.
Well, we could, we could either pre-select, or you, the committee can start its work. And um, at least it could advert, they can advertise, they can't even advertise now until they come and talk to us.
They should be able to do that.
They can get the process started and, you know, if it's urgent for us, one of us to go, they can call us and, you know, ask somebody to step up. I don't think we have to have a whole board meeting for that.
So I think that's, I I think that's kind of the rest of that, well, not really the rest of the row. I think that's, that's the things that are the departments that either yeah, are, you you know, like, very impactful to our, to the citizens, or you know, maybe not as outwardly facing, but really, really important. Um, so that would be DPW, treasure collector, town administrator, assessing, assess, oh, no, yeah, assessing. Actually, I think assessing director, does that go in the first bucket?
DPW.
Assessing director.
And then building commissioner. Building conservation administrator.
Is Brian, is that Brian or assessing?
Recreation. And.
Conscum.
So they.
Well, COA HS.
Yeah, yeah, I think that one.
Conscum administrator, same.
Recreation.
I think most of that next row.
Yeah.
Well, recreation, I, um.
Well, you would appoint somebody on the committee, but it is, it would be the ATA and TA's.
Yeah, I think that would.
I think the distinction between tier one and tier, tier one is a select board-driven process, basically, and tier two is a TA ATA-driven process.
Select board contributing process.
Right.
And then there's the ones that we're just appointing.
And then there are the ones we, well, and then there are the ones we don't have authority, like.
Three is we don't, yeah, but we should stick, so, so for communications, I think police chief and fire chief, I I think if it's if it's a role that is reporting to somebody else, then that person should be driving that process.
Exactly, yes.
So where does communications fall in that?
Under fire chief and police chief.
Okay, so they're tier two.
I thought they were the, I was like Nathan, I was surprised to see that. I I thought the communications director or manager reports to jointly to the chiefs.
I thought it was just the police.
Oh, well, yeah, similar, but it's not.
It is.
It is, okay.
They do because you decided that. Ultimately, they report.
This is, this is not.
Actually, they should be dropped down then on a longer stem on our organizational chart, because they're really not at the same level as police and fire chief then. So they're slightly below, so they should have a longer stem. So, and same with animal um
inspections.
Inspections. So are those, so are we just, did we just say that communications and animal inspection inspections are tier three?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's a three, three.
Who says then, animal inspections?
Yeah.
We've always just done that as part of our appointments of committees and everything.
Is that a volunteer job?
No.
No.
There's own, there's, there's typically two two qualified people that thankfully keep coming back.
Right. Yeah. And when there isn't, I am sure that the police chief will probably find us another one.
Does that come under police, really?
Uh, animal inspector is board of health.
A board of health. Oh, well, that's maybe why we don't have any.
Shouldn't that move over?
Yeah. Should, should that move over?
It's interesting, though, that's always come to us to be appointed.
Yeah, why, why do we appoint it then?
Let's trade. We, they gave us hazardous waste the other day, so. Let's give them animal inspection.
Okay.
Yeah. Agreed to it.
Right. Yeah, so I lost track, though. Sorry, Nathan, because you went really fast. DPW director, you want it as tier two?
I went across the top, yeah. DPW, treasure collector, town accountant, and assessing director, town clerk. No, not town clerk.
No, that's a, that's a, that's a star, that's a number one.
That's a green bubble right now.
That was a mistake. Um, building commissioner.
Okay.
Town planner, you skipped town.
Yes, we would have to skip that.
That's because that's planning board.
Planning board.
Conservation commission.
Okay.
That's Conscum too, but they're, they're not elected.
Right, so it would be.
They're appointed, the Conscum is appointed by you, but then they have control over the employee.
Okay.
Uh, okay.
So just at the appointment.
By our statute?
No, by state law.
COA HS director. Recreation.
And then all the rest do not belong to us.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I think town IT director and facilities director is tier three under Ryan, I think.
And then, so there's those two, three, and then everything else is three.
Yeah, but I got one other uh thing. We don't presently have it, but if we did have a finance director, I think it should be our appointment.
Yes, but we don't have.
You could have an open slot bubble. I mean, you should put the open, because you've even in your next set of charts, don't you refer to the possibility that that will again be a position?
Yeah.
Okay, but I don't think it has, okay.
I think this is a good start.
Yeah, so here are my notes. So do we, let, we have consensus around this?
Yeah, well, are we moving the animal inspector to board of health? Are we asking?
I would like to do more research on that one.
Okay.
Yeah, let's keep it until we know differently.
And we have to talk about.
And and it's a tier three anyway.
Uh, right.
So just hypothetically, how does this, or how would this work going forward? So if you have an appointment like a police assistant that will still come to us for for something, or not no longer, because we would consider that tier three?
Everything has to come to you for a final appointment. What we want to do is package it correctly, so that you're not surprised. So we can start the whole process and get everything going, make a recommendation for you, and then you can appoint, rather than coming to you, setting up the process each time, and then appointing. I know it sounds like a small difference, but it does, does create a lot of problems. So you'll be informed, this vacancy exists, we're initiating the process that we already discussed. Any issues that come up during the the hiring process, we would communicate to you, but that final appointment would be packaged the way you just described. So that each time, so that you know. And then Aubrey can now better assist departments and boards and committees in getting telling them this is, this is the process, and this is what you need to do to get someone appointed.
That was tier three that you just explained, right?
Right, or tier two, the way you said it, we would get a select board member.
Only thing that I would say, because I think I probably created this problem by my asking questions a lot. If we're doing the appointments, I think it's just really important that we see their job descriptions, that we knows, you know, otherwise why are we even doing the appointment, right? You know, I think we should know something about the person that's coming in.
It's more packaging it the way you want to see it than it is keeping you from the process. And then if you don't hire someone who thinks this way, as you did with me, um, you should you should consider that in the next hiring process. But if I thought there was going to be an issue with a hire, I would, I would stop the process and bring it to and discuss it. So if like David just said, hey, we're trying to classify a finance director, I would bring you the classification, I would bring you the appointment problem that exists outside the structure, so you could discuss it. I wouldn't just bring you a finance or bring you someone that's going to be a problem. Um, which I think sometimes people think happens, but it, you know, I I know, I want each employee to be starting on a good foot, so you should make sure you hire someone who thinks that way.
The ones we didn't really talk about are the ones above the line. Um, obviously, kind of, we did talk about town administrator, but the executive assistant is a direct connection for us. I think that should be tier two, not tier one.
I agree.
I agree, yes.
Um, and the assistant town administrator, somebody that we would rely on heavily, if we ever let Ryan leave. Um, and so I think that should be a tier two as well, not tier one.
Not, oh, yeah, tier two.
I mean, tier two, there's still.
Tier two, right.
Involvement and everything. It's just not that whole big, we're all involved.
Well, kind of the way it's.
Tier two.
Tier one is, um, you know.
The tier three is.
Frequently going to be, we're outsourcing, getting a, a company to help us, for that person.
Yeah.
I I would consider the ATA tier one, because if, let's say I went out on medical leave for 30 days, I'm hoping I don't, but then you would be investing the power that you give the town administrator to the assistant town administrator.
This is.
In, in his or her normal function as HR director, perhaps tier two, but it's the ability to get that next level of authority that you would want.
Mm-hmm, okay, yeah, that makes sense.
So I would like to turn this into a policy slash procedure. But in the meantime, can we have a vote to adopt this list of um town functions and the tier, you know, the tiers of.
Three tiers.
The three tiers um for their hiring, so that we can get so it's on the record that this is the policy, and then we'll, we're.
Ending a review of seeing the written tiers. Could, yeah, couldn't we, right?
I understand, but the thing is, I want to make it clear that we've made this decision, and these are the tiers, and that we, that part doesn't have to be discussed again.
Couldn't we let Ryan redo the org chart, so it's colored and it's clear, and then we can vote it next. Shouldn't be a long deliberation if it reflects.
Well, and then, and with a list of the tiers, what the tiers mean.
I mean, graphically, I would just say the color coding is good, and you just explain what the coding means.
Right, I understand, but it has to be in writing.
How he makes a chart, but it should be the chart that reflects today's discussion.
Yeah, but I want Ryan to be empowered from tonight on to be able to start hiring in these tiers, so he doesn't have to wait for whatever, how many ever weeks before our next meeting.
Are you anticipating a flight from Carlyle?
You never know, you never know.
I guess I feel comfortable that Ryan, if there's a position, Ryan, this is what we talked about, is what you can do. And we can finalize this in the next meeting when we see what the actual tiers are. But in the meantime, if somebody leaves, I think we have general consensus on the way forward.
I agree.
Yep, I agree. Okay, so here's the list. Go for it. Excellent. Hey, we've done good. Um, let's see, it is eight oh two. And let me look at the correct agenda here. Town hall personnel, boy, we're on time tonight.
Don't pat yourself on the back too hard.
I know, we're gonna get.
I know, but these were big, these were big things, so we got through them. Town hall personnel structure. Assistant treasure collector, land use assistant, and town planner hours. Take it away, Ryan.
Okay, as a, as a preamble, some re- recent vacancies and discussions like these have um necessitated rethinking the way that we're structured in town hall. Additionally, in the last budget process, both the select board and the finance committee asked me to make recommendations when opportunities came up in order to increase the efficiency of both our staff and our budget. So that's the the impetus of this um this recommendation here. So I just want to assure, ensure, assure, one of the shurs, the board, that these recommendations come from hours and hours of conversations with department heads, relevant boards, and um everyone, I thought, who needed to have a voice in this conversation, and now it is coming to you. So this is a deliberative process um that that might be coming from my typing, but has been involved with a lot of people. The recommendations, just as a preview, that are recommended here would um increase our service levels while decreasing our budget by 24,000 combined. Then these recommendations also do not use the sustainability dollars that you set aside in the budget, and you'll see why that's relevant. So if you look at the uh finance chart, the previous structure was a finance director, treasurer, collector, and accountant, as the main department heads, with an assistant treasurer collector of 35 hours, a finance assistant, and HR assistant of 28 hours, and a finance assistant that was split with the building department, about 18 hours. Um, what we're proposing, and this is the finance team, this is not, this is not just my proposal, it's the finance team, that the um position, it's already been classified as a treasurer collector stays, the position of accountant stays, that we uh maintain the finance and assistant HR assistant while working with her to redefine her job description to to make her more of a treasurer assistant, and then also helping Aubrey with HR functions, all things that she does now, just codifying it and clarifying expectations. And then having a full finance assistant, so this would be Nancy from the building department, who is half accountant right now, would come over and have some redundancy in these finance operations. So we're going from what is essentially a little more than two employees to a little under two employees, which creates some efficiencies. Uh, what we would gain in this restructure is a land use assistant. So this person would primarily 100% assist the building department to make sure there's no loss of uh functionality, customer service, and assistance for our very excellent building commissioner and the folks who need him currently. The other part of this person's job, however, and we do estimate that in any given week, it could be from uh 15 to 25 hours of time, would be to serve as the sustainability assistant or a land use assistant that we've been, we've been looking for. So Julie and I have been recommending almost all along that a part-time sustainability person would greatly help us in terms of data collection and and other things that we've identified in our sustainability goals and the master plan. So this person would be able to do that. So there are some times when the building assistant is very busy, and there's some times when they're not, and this is an example of that flexible staff that will allow us to accomplish multiple functions. So we would hire at a higher level, hoping that this person could help us streamline permitting on the land use side, assist with public-facing activities eventually, when um that restructure comes, which you, which you saw with my presentation to the the board of health, and then also working on sustainability, which is a select board goal. The other part of this would be to compensate, a minor compensation to the town accountant and the treasurer collector for their involvement in the budget with me. Uh, talking one step each, and then uh up to five additional hours for the town planner, which would allow uh her to accomplish her sustainability goals, and that could be three to five, depending on on what we work out with Julie, and I know she's right there, so I'm not talking about her while she's in the room.
Excuse me.
Here's why we're recommending that.
Not full-time now? They're not, okay.
Which she, when we did hire her, that was what she wanted as well, so um we didn't shortchange.
You, you work like you're full-time. So it has to work 60 and be paid for 30, that's what I recall.
So the the reasoning for these recommendations, I'd be happy to to go through each detail with you and and probably should, but the the finance structure is more efficient and more replicable. So right now, if Nancy left us, which, dear God, I hope she doesn't, um, we would not be able to hire a half-time building assistant and a half-time finance, so this moves that along. I talked to John about it, John's not thrilled that we're taking, or recommending that we take Nancy, but um we assured him that there would be overlap and that Nancy would would train and help with any function and make sure that that department is smooth, because it's a really important department. It also would allow you to repurpose your sustainability support, not only investing in in Julie a little more, but also uh this dedicated assistant, and then if you wanted to, layer on that 30,000 for consulting to support the whole team. Or you can pull that and and use it for a different town priority. And then it further connects land use functions, especially building and planning. Um, like all the land use functions to be connected by all staff and have this work um overlap, so that in in lull times, you can have that efficiency, but this just starts that process. So one very poignant conversation that I had with the board of health that keeps ringing in my head is, you know, we we support this future structure of land use, but we we don't want to go first, right? We want to see the model. So this would step step in that direction and show the model without impacting any department or employee, uh except for John, but he he agreed to let us mess with this department a little bit. And then it further connects finance and HR functions, so there was some some difficulty in HR, because you didn't have an HR director, you had an assistant doing a lot of HR, and then all of that fell under the finance director. So this further clarifies that that HR function of who's doing that that support. So it's really restructuring the finance department, starting to restructure the land use department, and the benefit is that it's it's budget neutral or actually a savings. I just said a ton. I would love to um dig into any of it with you.
I have a question that I'm not sure I totally followed. What happens with the. Building commissioner, the assistant time or administrative time to the building commissioner? So is that, what, what's, what is, what's included in the proposed for the existing building commissioner?
So right now Nancy does about ten to eighteen hours of work for the building department weekly and that does vary seasonally. That land use assistant would assume that, that work.
Ah, okay.
Those ten to twenty hours and then the rest of the time would be for sustainability with the clear hiring intention of making sure that building comes first.
Got it. It makes more sense to mix building and sustainability than building and finance. In terms of functions.
I, I think one thing that's, that might not be clear in this chart too, is that when you. Reclassified the finance director as a treasurer collector, the treasurer collector assumed most of the treasury and collecting functions. In the previous arrangement, the assistant treasurer collector was doing a lot of those functions and the finance director was working. Working at a, at a higher level, so between Aubrey and I. In, in most towns our size, if not all, those functions would fall under the town administrator, assistant town administrator and the treasurer collector would focus on treasury, so this is what allows that efficiency in that department. I spoke with Sandy for a long time and Kelly, and they believe that this is the most replicable. Solution possible and would provide the best coverage for employees and, and they're all comfortable with it. In fact, they. They would bring it to you themselves and recommend it because they think it's going to help them.
So in, in, in this go around. I guess I have two questions, but in this go around, the land use assistant is really focused on. Sustainability and building department, not in providing support to other land use. Like they, they wouldn't be helped, they wouldn't be helping. Would they be supporting the town planner? With their administrative, administrative needs or is it, is it just the building and sustainability?
For now, it would be building sustainability. When I say for now, I mean. As vacancies occur in the land use department, whether that's two years from now or, or twenty years from now. Each one of those positions should be looked at to increase.
Okay, so this is kind of a step really. Okay, and above the land use assistant, you have the arrows that say overlap. What's, that's overlap of those two boxes ahead that, that, a, a, above that they overlap their duties so that there's. Their support if either one of them is out.
Yes, and we worked with Department of Revenue and also our auditors to make sure that anything we codified wasn't creating a. An ethics violation with finance, so there are some functions that we can overlap and some we can't, so we put that in the job descriptions. You can't take money in and then record it, and I know I'm using the wrong terms because I'm not as smart as them, but. Can't be the person who collects it and writes it down, and so we made sure we thought through all of that function. Most towns have a problem with that because there's one person who does everything in the town, towns our size, so we are lucky to have two, but we definitely don't need three. And it would be inappropriate for me to recommend over staffing the department.
It's all my questions.
David?
Um, yeah, I may have missed it, sorry. The HR, the little piece of HR, what's that for the finance assistant?
It's a, a lot of benefits administration, so.
Okay, benefits, okay. And incumbents, so that position, who's incumbent and who's a new hire here?
So there's no one new, but Anish is the finance assistant HR and Nancy would then move out of building and then we would hire the new person.
Okay, and the eighteen hour person is who, though?
That is half of Nancy's job.
It's half of Nancy. So who am I missing here?
Assistant treasurer collector is vacant right now.
It's vacant, I see, gotcha, thank you.
We, we moved her up to.
Yeah, yeah, I know, okay, great, great. Good for me.
Yeah. Uh, any further questions? Well, do we want to pull the trigger? Do we need a, a motion for this?
I move, I move that the select board vote to approve the proposed restructuring of town hall finance. Financial and land use positions with related employee. With, with related individual employee appointments to be brought to the select board for final approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed, that was unanimous, thank you. Making progress in town hall. Okay. Um, fall, fall town meeting discussion, I see Wayne is here. Want to join us, Wayne? Just the recommendation for Article nine, appointed town clerk.
So the first thing on here says town meeting procedures and administration.
Right.
What, what is that?
What is that?
It's a placeholder for you to discuss town meeting.
Oh, okay. And then we have another part there where Nathan and Wayne want to discuss something.
Yeah, can we, we could just start with that if you want.
Um, that was the, the last bullet on that thing. You want to start with their town meeting working group?
It's, it's gonna take three minutes.
Okay, okay.
If it doesn't, we haven't done our job. Uh, so Wayne, Wayne and I met to, to talk about the promised topic that we had discussed in a. The previous meeting about. Taking a look at how to improve town meeting, um, town meeting involvement, I should say. And so Wayne and I met and talked about, well, actually here, I think we had talked about creating a study group to do that, and so Wayne and I talked about that. We talked a lot about the mission, kind of topic areas. What types of, you know, report, you know, who, who would see the reports from this study group? And the primary thing, you know, we're not, we're not ready right now to say this is the outline. But we're running out of time and Wayne and I thought it would be really great. In order to get people involved, if he could just announce that town meeting that we, that we're doing this and ask anybody who's interested to contact either Aubrey or, or Ryan. It just seemed like an awesome opportunity. Here's the people who are at town meeting and, you know, saying it might just generate some interest, and so we didn't want to do that without. You all knowing that we wanted to do that and, and to kind of get your blessing on doing that. Do you want to add anything, Wayne?
Yes, thank you. It's, so sparing you the details because we have a town meeting in, in front of us, just the idea was that if we announce that, look. The select board was interested in doing it, I think it's a great idea. We have some specific ideas that we will be bringing back to the select board in November. About how to do it, and if the select board moves forward, we would hope to be able to. Formulate, to form some group. That could meet over the winter and begin to develop some recommendations, so similar to your public information session. The idea is just letting people know something's coming down the road and if you're interested. Follow what's going on and when the call comes for people to volunteer, you know, raise your hand. It's just. Letting people know what's happening so that we might make it, make it a little bit easier to find people to help us.
Yeah, my only comment is that. It's the people that are not at town meeting that need to know about this, because these are the ones we, we want to get to town. The people that are at town meeting are already there and engaged, is there, are there a rest of them that we need to get in?
Yeah, I think we talked about there's, there's really two different. I intel that we want, we absolutely want people who do go because they know what's working and what's not working, which is why we want to announce this. This is not all the outreach that we need to make.
Yeah, okay, just as long as that's understood.
Yes, yeah, we spent a lot of time talking about that.
Um, I just want to make sure I understand. The, the purpose, as well as the, you know, hoped for outcomes. So it's, it's either a working group or a committee that you're going to come back in November and make a recommendation.
Uh, yes, and as a matter of fact, I, I didn't look in detail, but the stuff you have later on in your agenda tonight, actually. I was wondering about tho, those sort of things, so actually depending on how you. End up the, the advice you got from town council, that actually may inform what we end up recommending to you.
Okay.
It's, that's indeterminate at this point.
But, and so. It would, so you'll develop whatever you think the, the group should be and then with the outline of sort of what their purpose is. And then bring something back to the select board and, and then reach out and. Put together a group of volunteers that want to. Participate and I, I guess my question, is it? Is it part, there, the goal is to increase engagement in town meeting? Is that, is that, is that the specific?
And prior to.
Charge? And part, and what?
Prior to town meeting.
Getting people in, I mean, in the, in the discussions and decisions that will be made at town meeting, but it's all focused on town meeting?
It's all process.
Of town meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, but my, my view of town meeting is, is. You want town meeting to be able to be making great decisions or good decisions on behalf of the town. And that involves multiple things, it includes engagement in, in everything that happens in the run-up to town meeting. It's engagement at town meeting, it's what happens. How I do my job well or not so well at town meeting. All of that's when you, you have, all of those things potentially would be on the table because they all contribute at the end of the day. To improving how well or not we govern ourselves.
Got it. Sounds good.
Okay.
Is the, I agree with all of that, is the. Charge then, would it be a, it's something that we would then vet the, the mission, the charge, whatever, when you're done, when you get. Past all that, get volunteer or whatever, you, you come back with your charge and.
That's what we're coming with in November, right?
Ye- ye- yes, I, I think we, we are admittedly asking for your. Blessing of about a one hundred thousand foot altitude concept and become a lot more detailed later.
Yeah, right, sounds great.
Just to be clear about one thing is oftentimes we're talking about is a task force or is a working group or is it a committee and lots of times that's like. Because we want to move, you know, we want to move fast, we, you know, there's public meeting laws, it's open meeting laws and all that. This would be a public meeting because it's important that we're trying to get this, the whole purpose is to try to get input on the towns.
Yeah. I think you have consensus that.
Thank you.
Board is on board. Great. So let's move to the, the recommendation for Article nine, we have not yet taken a position on that, there was a question earlier.
Could I interject on this? So, yeah, this has come up because obviously the select board, we need to determine if we want to take a position. And I thought it would be helpful to have some more public input on this particular topic and. So if Madam Chair, you're willing to open this up, I'd, I'd like to kind of run a quick. You know, meeting here to, to open it up to questions and comments, but to do so to limit them to two, two minutes to three minutes per person. And, and I think it would be helpful for the select board to just better understand what the public sentiment is on this particular item. To, to that end, you received a number of comments by email and I had reached out individually to all, each of those individuals as well as to the governance task force. To ask them to please attend tonight and if they have comments or questions, please bring them up because I think that's really helpful. For our discussion and engagement of the public, so if you're okay with that?
I'm okay, but I would like to poll the, the committee to make sure that there's, they are okay with it as well.
Yes, that's two to three minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so I would then open it up to the public and with the, the understanding that you will take two to three minutes and you will address the.
I will be the official timer.
That'd be great, but if you just address the select board, please, but you can ask questions or make comments relative to Article nine. And just by way of background, there, just to, for those I, I think probably are familiar, but in two thousand seventeen, this. Came to the town meeting and the town meeting, the residents voted to not change from an elected to an appointed town clerk position. In two thousand twenty-two, the Governance Task Force report to the town of Carlisle. Recommended that creating an, a, an approval of a warrant Article seventeen at the town meeting. Or actually they made a number, a recommendation number two was to make the town clerk an appointed position and. Our master plan also discussed it a bit by evaluating municipal organizations and staffing structures based on the findings of the Governance Task Force. And regular assessment of department capacity heads, needs, so. We've, we've kind of touched on this, but I think that the select board is really interested in hearing from people, so. If there are questions, if you wanted to raise your hand on Zoom or there are public, members of the public here tonight. But please raise your hand and identify yourself in your street and ask or comment. Uh, Ms. Simorano.
Uh, it's, uh, Zamaro, three ninety-eight, um, low three in Carlisle and. Um, I'll just repeat the question I had before. It's really about performance evaluation and if the public has an opportu, first of all, if people who are appointed. And or elected to town positions and interface with the public. If they, if there is any kind of a performance evaluation protocol that the town applies. And if in fact there is, is there any opportunity for public input? I think it's really important when you have people in positions that really do. Uh, involve the residents in terms of making important decisions about how things are done in town. I think it's awfully important for us to have some, some say or just be able to provide input. Uh, with regard to our perception as resonant as to the person's. Uh, performance, I think there's competence at a job, but there's also the very, very important aspect of being able to be accessible to the public. Being. Able, may not be the right word, but, but. Easy to approach and forthcoming with information when asked. So that's my question.
Well, I can, I'd, I'd be happy to respond to that, so tonight, actually, we discussed the, the organization chart of the town and the various authority of the town administrator. And how the select board wants to be involved in the hiring of various personnel within the town. And we specifically noted that the town. Clerk is right now elected and so we did not have a policy on that, but when we discussed it, I think there was a mention on the select board to have that as a. As a, a high level, we call it, called it tonight, a tier one review so that we would have. Public input and, and even if it was a tier two, you would have someone from the select board overseeing it along with. Someone within the TA and possibly or someone within the, the town governance structure and possibly. Um, one other person reviewing that, but that would be something that I think we would need to further explore if we were to move to this. Does any other?
I have, yes, I was just going to say, I think, I think that's. What you were just talking about is like how we would hire the role. We do have a performance process that we are testing out, you know, that, that we're really kicking off this year in full-fledged and we're doing it with Ryan. Starting Thursday morning. Uh, and so that, that review is there for the appointed positions. I'm not aware of a review process for an elected position, is there a performance review process, Ryan, do you know of, for an elected position?
Only if the elected position volunteered to participate. So the valuation, so to speak, for an elected official is the election.
Right. And yet.
Succinct, thank you, well, I. There's, there's been a lot of discussion, but I think Lana, the answer to your question is that currently there is no evaluation or performance review. Because it's not allowed really. Um, and if it were appointed, there would be. An evaluation. Process for that position.
What's interesting though Lana is that you're raising not just that there'd be a performance. Evaluation, but that there's some me, some process by which community members, residents could give their input.
Exactly.
Which we don't currently have, you know, in our. Personnel, you know, our HR policies in terms of. terms of these new goals and evaluation steps that we've put together. So that's a very interesting question that I think we'd have to ask, you know, figure out how we, how we would do that for people that have a big role in terms of customer service, so to speak.
Right, right.
Just for those who entered the room, we are having a, a hearing on this. We're asking to the public as well as online to take two minutes, two to three minutes, if you have a comment or questions. And if you just raise your hand and identify yourself, that would be great. Seeing no hands in the audience, I do see one on, online here. Okay, well, I'll get Gretchen in a second. Okay, Rebecca, you want to, do you have a question? And can you please identify yourself in your street?
Yep. So it's Rebecca, the area, 48 Bingham Road. I was, served as the Chair of the Governance Task Force when it was convened. Obviously, it's no longer in existence, so I'm here as a regular resident. But I did want to highlight the recommendation that the Governance Task Force made. And I wanted to, actually, it's rather short, so I will read that into the record and so that all of you have, can take it into consideration as you think through this. We recommended that in addition to serving, that we convert the town clerk from an elected to appointed position. In addition to serving residents' various front office needs at Town Hall, town clerk is responsible for ensuring that the town is in compliance with more than 450 statutes and regulations. As such, the town clerk must be knowledgeable and proficient at compliance-related functions, but does not have any discretionary authority under statute. In Carlisle, the town clerk is currently in elected position, and thus, the candidate pool is limited to the kept town's residents, which creates the possibility of an unqualified elected resident who becomes responsible for what is in reality a professional position. According to the task force recommends, that the town clerk be appointed by the select board and report to the town administrator. In addition to guarding against the risks to the town associated with inexperienced personnel in such a crucial administrative position, this change further enhances the town administrator's ability to create a cohesive and functioning team within Town Hall, establishes a reporting structure, and guarantees an experience-based hiring process for this administrative position that does not engage in discretionary policymaking. This recommendation does not arise as a result of any specific concerns relating to the individual who happens to be the town clerk at the time of this report. However, nothing would preclude the select board from, select board from reappointing the current town clerk to the position after this recommendation is implemented. So that's the end of the section. Please feel free to refer to the full report for some additional footnotes and details. I will say that, you know, we had made a recommendation, the first recommendation, actually, in that report was to pass the Town Administrator bylaw that would also deal with the reporting structure and reviews. And so I, I really urge you to review the report. I will say that, that the state as a whole, the Commonwealth as a whole, has been moving towards having appointed town clerks rather than elected in order to guard against having inexperienced and unqualified candidates. I think if you reviewed in the packet, there is an intern had done a report and how there were unopposed town clerks when they ran for election, which I, I think is a significant risk. And I think that's basically the highlights for right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rebecca. Okay, so I'll look in the audience. Is there anyone who has a question or a comment on this particular item? Yes, would you please, Gretchen?
Come up to the mic. Oh, yeah, please come to the microphone.
And have a cookie while you're there, please.
Gretchen Andrew, 871 Bedford Road. I do have a question, which is, you're saying there is no mechanism for review or, or, I can't remember exactly what the wording was.
Evaluation.
Evaluation. And I think we had one, I think it's called an election?
Well, that's what we were saying. That's, it's an election, but it's not, it's not the same as a staff evaluation, where if there is need for
It's true.
Improvement somewhere.
Excuse me, but that way the clerk is really being reviewed by the people in the town, who I believe is who the clerk is serving.
That's
Be mistaken in that, but.
No, that, that's why it historically was elected. And it's neat to have a system of government where you can directly elect a, an authority like that. However, the, the issue here is really, it's a division of powers type issue, where if your town clerk is elected and you have a significant issue, for instance, I mean, if they weren't performing at all, they decided to not come in, or even worse, if they decided to do something that was not in keeping with what we would think of as customary, or not only customary, but legal procedural policies of fair elections, how would you remove that person? And you say, well, the only way to do that is through another election. You can't, you can't otherwise fire the person, they're elected. So it's only a recall. Well, who runs the recall? The town clerk. And so you have a position that is really unaccountable to anyone. And I don't think that's a healthy situation.
Anyone in town is there accountable to anything?
Right. Now, do I think that's really going to happen? We've been very fortunate that we've had, you know, town clerks and that this is, you know, you can say, it's never been a problem. But we're here trying to look out, and we're listening to task force recommendations that are saying, this is something you should really be concerned about.
You know, I don't want to get into a big debate.
These are questions that are important because at the town meeting, we're going to talk about them.
System where the town clerk is going to be beholden to the Board of Selectmen instead, I guess is, when you get right down to it, if you're worried about who they're going to be accountable to and who's going to be setting it up or, I don't, I can't think how to put it right now.
Yeah. Ultimately, you're right.
Be beholden to the Board of Selectmen. And so is the town clerk going to be independent that way? So it's a, it's not that clear cut. I don't say, I don't believe.
Yeah. Well, ultimately, the, the Board of, the Select Board is elected in staggered terms. And so you could reelect the Select Board if you were dissatisfied with, with how that was going. But this mechanism at least provides some oversight. And the other thing to keep in mind is, the Select Board isn't one person. So again, you have a board, which is why the, all these things are set up as boards, because you don't want one person having too much power. And in this case, your alternative is you really do have someone with, you know, somewhat unchecked authority if they're not performing. You have no real way to, to change that.
Interesting. Thank you.
I do believe that there's a lot of oversight by the state as well on this role.
There is. We shouldn't overlook that. But I, I guess I just want to add that the, the time to, to make this decision is when you have somebody who's operating very well in the position, rather than when somebody's not. Because the other thing I want to keep on pounding on is we are talking about the position, we are not talking about the person that is in the position. And I want that to be crystal clear at all times.
All right. I see Vanessa is who has her hand raised.
Yeah. Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, can you please introduce yourself?
Oh, sure. Vanessa Maroney, Bedford Road. So like Rebecca, I also served on the, the Governance Task Force recently. So I tried to write some things down, so I'd be a little bit more concise. So I have a couple of hopes for tonight as part of this discussion. I hope that the Select Board will vote to take a position on this article tonight. And I also hope that you will commit to moving the article at town meeting. Those are my, my two hopes. I do want to point out that not only was it the, the Governance Task Force that found that a move to the appointed position would be more beneficial to Carlisle. Importantly, also in the 2012 Independent Outside Consultation of the Collins Report, also, that was one of the first documents that found specifically for Carlisle, that it would be beneficial to move to an appointed town clerk. We hear a lot about the discussions of the, the two main responsibilities with the town clerk position, where it's electoral responsibilities and the municipal responsibilities. And I really sort of focus my concerns on the municipal side of just safeguarding our town and making sure that we take care to protect all our interests and assets and, and everything, and our people. And something that Travis spoke about was about the recall election, and that that would, is currently the only way to remove somebody from office. And everybody here knows that we didn't even have that ability. We didn't realize we didn't have that ability until just before 2017. And as Travis said, you know, the, the person overseeing that is the town clerk themselves. And what if they decide to not show up for the election itself, or not count the votes? I mean, that's very difficult to, to say that there's any oversight there without, there's just no real accountability. And so one thing that we found out when, when I was on the board, when I was on the Select Board, or the Board of Selectmen then, and we were working to, you know, we, we were stunned at finding out that we did not have this recall ability. We found out from Town Council, and I wish that Tom Harrington was perhaps here tonight, where we, we found out that it is possible for somebody to be found guilty of a crime, and this is where I totally want to be fact checked, but I remember this, and I believe Nathan will as well, that it is possible to be found guilty of a crime and even be incarcerated and still serve in your elected capacity. So without any, any problems. So you really do want some checks and balances there. It's very important to not be vulnerable. So we have taken that step as a town to make sure that we have the ability to remove somebody from office. It's not easy to do, but it is possible. We want to make sure that we hire from the best, the broadest possible pool of applicants, and so that they will be also held accountable to doing a great job. That comes along with annual reviews. I think that's incredibly important. And to Barney's point, you know, there can be 360 degree, you know, reviews where everybody is involved. And really, it's a customer service job. So I think that would be brought into the job description as well. And when you look at this from an employer's standpoint, we want our employees, we want our town employees to feel like they have some real job security. Right now, the town clerk, regardless of their performance, they have to be nervous every year that they might lose their livelihood. And I do not think that that is a fair expectation for someone. This is really our only position, other than I think Wayne makes, what, $100 as his elected role for town moderator. It is our only elected, real salary employee. And every three years, they have to really kind of sweat it, I would think. And if they're doing a great job, we want them to be able to keep their job. And, you know, we don't want it to turn into a popularity contest where, let's say, they're doing a great job, but somebody comes in who's really well connected and, you know, but they don't have the skills.
Did your time here, but
Okay. Can I make a couple more?
I, I think I've got to move on to some other comments that are here.
Well, I, I think, I've put a lot of work into this over the years.
I outlined the criteria for, for making comments and asking questions. So if
Okay, we did have an elected treasurer, which is crazy. We did elect Select Board to hire our police force and our fire and everybody else with a top position. So I don't know why we wouldn't do the same for the elected, I mean, for the appointed clerk. Thank you.
All right. Time for your drop. What?
Nothing, I'm just
All right. Any, no, all right. Laura, Lana, oh, I'm sorry, Nancy has not had a chance. Did you, you're on mute, Nancy, if you
Why don't you take Lana next? She had her hand up first.
Had a chance to speak, but just to be brief, I mean, I, I, I hear very clearly the arguments in favor of an appointed position, and I happen to agree with some of them. My, my question is what pretty much Barney expressed as, as one of my intentions, which is, and I'll just say it in another way, there's the cop, well, I already said it this way, competence in the job, performance, but there also is the important piece of accessibility to the public and response to, to the public that the position serves. And I think that applies to other positions as well. But I personally feel that the town clerk is absolutely one of the most critical positions that we have in this town. And to make sure that it's a person who understands the job, performs it as it's intended to be performed, and that they also are able to interact with the public in a professional and helpful manner. That's all.
Thank you. I, I think that the Select Board, you know, is talking about tonight, whether we take a position on this article. And, you know, just for, for the public, you know, just because we take a position, I think our position as the Select Board to date has been that we want to have this go to the town. We're not, we're not trying to, we're not trying to make a decision here, or even, or, you know, really, I mean, we're looking out and saying, this is a potential risk to the town. And this is a solution that has been put forward by the task force and by multiple reports. And it probably makes some sense. But ultimately, it's going to be the residents of the town who decide this. Further, there were two methods of going about this. The first was that we could vote at town meeting, and then through an act of legislature, change this to move to an appointed town clerk. And the Select Board has already indicated that it doesn't want to take that approach. In fact, it would rather go to town meeting, have the voters decide at town meeting, and then have an election and have this as a question on a ballot question, so that voters in Carlisle have two opportunities to really express what they feel on this. And I just think that's a better way of going about this. And I think that this is a, a reasonable issue to put forward to the public here. So I
Have a chance to talk finally.
Nancy?
He's seated too.
Okay.
Lana, so
Nancy, okay, would you like to make a comment?
Yes. I would like you to say, to take no position on this. It seems to be that the current proposal isn't, it's got some pitfalls that probably a lot of voters don't understand. It took me a long conversation by email with Ryan to totally understand the implementation of Article nine. Article nine, if it, if the apartment is approved, it starts the appointment process. Correct me if I'm wrong. This could take some time. But also, the election at the same, on the same ballot, might result in a different town clerk. And once the appointment process is finished, that person might lose their job. I, this is not something that seems well done in an election year. I've looked at other towns, I've looked at how they've actually presented in a detailed fashion, the pros and cons of appointments and elections in a public way. I had to go to another town to find a good description of that. Another town waited to take up the question of appointment until the current town clerk had announced that she intended to resign. It's, it's kind of a collision doing it in an election year.
So Nancy, I just want to correct one misperception that you have. The Article nine, it just allows us to put the question on the ballot. It is, it's asking if we can put the question on the ballot for the town to
That's this Article nine, right? I'm talking about in May, when you ask again, on the ballot, at the same time you have an election.
Oh, well, yeah, but the election and the ballot then happen at exactly the same time. So nothing will happen before the ballot. No appointment will happen before the ballot.
I understand that. But my understanding, after this long conversation with Ryan, was that on the ballot, you ask again if you should switch to appointment. And if so, that triggers starting the appointment process. But at the same ballot, you have an election. And it's possible for somebody else to be elected, is it not? And it's possible for somebody else to be elected, is it not?
That's possible, sure.
Okay. And if the appointment then is then carried out, that person who was elected may not have the job. Is that right?
Correct. But that person would, could be a candidate.
Oh, sure.
For a pointed position.
Yes.
And be up to the select board at that point to evaluate.
Yeah.
And one of the, and this was, we discussed this at the beginning, one of the reasons for this is to really try to find, you know, highly qualified candidates for this professional position. And it's a highly skilled position.
There are, you never mentioned the fact that there are assists for this. There is a town clerk accreditation, accreditation process. There is volunteer group who are helping with elections. Up until tonight, there was an assistant town clerk. So I don't see that this is insurmountable.
Well, again, it, the, okay, I think we're, we're gonna kind of take if there are any other questions and new, new points to raise. But again, on, okay, we have, looks like we have one member from the public here. Would you please introduce yourself?
I can just get a cookie.
Again, two to three minutes.
Close to yourself. I have to have it in your mouth almost.
A cookie or the microphone?
Both.
Either.
Both.
Brian Crew, 71 Rogers Road. I was also a member of the task force. And I want to caveat by saying I'm speaking for myself here, not for the task force. I was not particularly concerned about election issues in this. It's not really why I thought this was a good idea. I, I just, I, I think it's a little, I think the town needs to decide how it wants to view this position. And right now, it kind of is simultaneously viewing it from two ends. And it seems incongruous to me that what is essentially in all respects, a professional salaried employee of the town who's in town hall on a daily basis doing the, the yeoman's work of the town, is simultaneously treated as an elected official who's supposed to sit above it all and enact, you know, something an elected official would do. It's, it's not, it's not what the position is in the modern day-to-day. It is the head of a bureaucracy. And it, I feel like it needs to be treated as such. And that's not to say that the public can't pick someone who's good at it. It just means that you are self-selecting away from getting people that may have years and years and years of experience doing this just because they don't happen to live in town. And, you know, it, in my mind, it is really about how do you want to view the position? Is it, is it a department head or is it an elected official? And if really you're treating it as a department head, except for the fact that there's an election, that, that seems a little bizarre to me at this point. So that's just my comment. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good cookie.
And I will take a cookie.
Take two. All right.
All right.
I, I just have a comment to offer, which is, I would like us as a select board to have the conversation again about whether or not we're taking a position on this article.
That's what we're doing tonight.
Tonight.
In fact, we're, I think we should close the hearing, and I think this is a good segue. Ryan?
I do, if the board would indulge me. Jake put together, Jake Goki, our municipal intern, who is doing a lot of work for us in town hall, put together a memo and has a brief presentation on the data, if you're willing, is, is part of our commitment to him to professionally develop but also inform this conversation.
Great. Pass the mic to him, though.
Hello, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you so much for having me. So a few quick points from some of the research I did last week. So, as we all know, many of the duties of the town clerk have increased dramatically since the bylaws were last updated in terms of this position. So there's a substantial increase in the complexity of holding elections in terms of both early voting, mail-in voting, and election law, both at the local, state, and federal level that need to be adhered to. In addition to election issues with the complexity of the position, ethics, public records, and open meeting law have changed significantly. And because of this, this position is much more complex than when, when it was originally created as an elected position way back when. As, in a response to this, in recent years, 153 of 100, of 351 Massachusetts municipalities have transitioned from elected to appointed clerks. Within towns of our own size and comparability to ourselves, nine of 17 municipalities have done so. And there's no evidence that any town has transitioned from an appointed to an elected clerk in recent history. So much of this data comes from a report commissioned by the town of Arlington from UMass Boston. And in their own election data, Arlington, which is a town of 42,000 people, almost 43,000, found that they had had no contested elections in a year when there was an incumbent candidate. So voters really had very little choice in their, in that town. And considering that Carlisle is much smaller than that, in our own election data, 2012 was the only year in which we had an incumbent challenge since 1983. So voters have had very little choice in terms of who they elect to be town clerk, except during years in which an incumbent did not run. And during those years, there was two candidates versus just one.
I just have a question about your, the, you saying that there was an incumbent challenge. Are you sure that it was an incumbent challenged, or it was just two candidates for the same office? Because I don't remember ever an incumbent being challenged. Was it? Oh, okay. All right. Sorry. Oh, you did. Okay. Sorry. 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 Okay. I was asleep when that happened. Sorry.
And yeah, I'd say that's pretty much the data that I was looking. Like, thank you for your time.
You.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
All right. Do I, I have a motion?
A motion to take a position or, well, support?
Or do you want to have more discussion?
We can put a motion on the floor to, I guess, it would be, the motion would be to support Article Nine. Is, is that it?
You, you could either.
Or the motion.
There's two motions. You could have to, to take them, to take a position. And then, so it depends upon whether you want to do one or two motions.
Right.
I mean, I think if, if we're saying whether we support or not, you know, the, the outcome of that isn't that we're not going to take a position. So I think we would need to start with, are we going to take a position or not? Or have that discussion as whether or not we're going to have that.
Let's take that discussion then. Um, you want to start?
I, I, I'm kind of taking a position.
Okay. David?
Am I supposed to say what I think?
Whether you think we should take a position or not.
I think we should take a position.
I think we should take a position.
I do as well.
I, as well. So that, that was easy. Okay. So may I have a motion?
So we don't need that motion.
Can I have the other motion then, please?
I, I move that we, that the select board support Article Nine.
Second.
Great. Any discussion?
Support means we support moving it to an appointed position in the manner we described, which means the town meeting vote is now, and then the, we don't change it. Whatever, if it, if it passes a town meeting, it's automatically on the ballot next May. And if it fails, it's not on the ballot, right?
If it fails in May, then it.
No, if it fails next week, it's done.
Doesn't go on the ballot. And similarly, if it fails at the ballot box.
Of course, yeah. Okay. But we don't revisit it in the way that was registered.
No, I mean, but what we're voting on right now is every, every town meeting Wayne says, because there's, no, I, I know that. I just clarity. So I, I got it. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table. It's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That was unanimous. So unanimous support, the recommendation, the vote.
Window of opportunity for that has closed.
No, it hasn't. There's plenty around.
Would you pass them in fact before you, uh, town meeting protocols?
What is that exactly?
I don't, I don't know. I.
Just so you can talk about town meeting if, if you need to.
Okay. Do we need to talk about town meeting? We're going to have the presentation.
Oh, there is the question, are we voting this little letter to the editor thing, or is that somewhere else?
Right. Which, maybe that's a separate item of business, but.
No, let's put it under there.
Do it here.
Put it under there. That's, that's easy.
Wayne, you were handing out cookies. Thank you very much for doing that. Was there any, anything, any, any process or procedure thing that you wanted to discuss about town meeting?
Just a, a quick reminder that select board and FinCom get to sit in the audience like everyone else. I hope you're happy with that.
We'll be in the first, first row or whatever.
Sit on the, in the first row.
Hey, you don't have to sit.
FinCom was very, very pleased with, with that.
How is that gonna, how is that gonna work? So I guess, as we're making the motions, just because there aren't.
You're not going to make the motions. We're just, and actually, we talked about this as, one of you suggested, can't we speed it up? We have to have, you know, we say, well, I move, that we're gonna, we're gonna move to the conquered approach, which is the moderator will say, you know, Kate Reed on behalf of the select board moves the adoption of Article Nine as printed in the motion handbook or whatever. That, that will be the way we, we do.
We're not going to adopt the Concordian three-day town meeting model, are we?
Not over my dead body. Thank you. There was that. And I, and I did just want to let you know, because there were a number of concerns. We had, we had a little bit, that there was some concern, we had some technical difficulties at the last town meeting with the Benfield setup. And fortunately, and I'll give a shout out to Matt Barron of Minuteman Media and John Dorshuk, who is our audio contractor. I met with them this afternoon. They've been very helpful. We did, we did some full testing, and we think we have it so that it, it will work well. And then the one, one other thing is just as, as a reminder that we will open the town meeting at seven. I'll take a motion from whichever of you would like to make a motion that we immediately adjourn until 7:45. And then you will take over and do whatever you want in terms of the information meeting.
Wayne, quick question for you on that. So if the motion says we're going to adjourn and resume at 7:45, and let's say we're done a little earlier with the information session, or do, do we have to wait till 7:45 to take up the warrant articles? Or could we go ahead and start a little earlier if we get it done literally?
Do you think there's a risk of that?
Well, we did a run-through this afternoon, and it, it was pretty, what's the right word? Pretty efficient, yes. And we could potentially, because again, remember, we're not, this is an informational session, so we're providing information, the very.
And you're not going to take questions.
And we're not taking questions. People have a way to send comments or questions via text to a phone number that'll be provided during the meeting. But no, there will not be an opportunity for people to ask questions or comments publicly.
Right. You know, that's a great question. And since I've never had to deal with an adjournment of a town meeting like this before, I'll have to, if the answer is no, I will figure out a formulation for how to do it correctly.
Wait, I, I think that the, what went out into the mailbox says that it's from 7:00 to 7:45. So people may be looking at that and not come back, you know, may not come in until 7:45.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll, we'll see. And, you know, it doesn't hurt to give people a five-minute stretch and social.
Right.
Social break. And, you know, you're not going to finish 20 minutes early, are you?
No.
Much. Okay.
No.
Good.
So, thank you.
I have a question about, just because this is the first that I've heard that we're not going to be up on the stage, not like I like to grandstand or anything. But where did that come from?
So where it, I've heard remarks from people off and on over the years, but just it's not any great groundswell or whatever. But someone made a comment about that, that was in that survey that I had presented, that I did after this past May. It was in the verbatim comments. And when I presented it, all that to you, one of you, and I don't recall who, said, you know, sort of picked at that and said, yeah, you know, why, why do we do it that way? And I asked, and I explained at the time that my understanding of the practice in other towns is that it's kind of mixed. Some towns very deliberately do not want the select board and FinCom up front because it's people's meeting. It's not, you know, the executives, and why should they be up there? And I thought that the consensus was, and I, and you, you all seemed to be in favor of that. And I said, well, if that's the way you'd like it, I have no problem with it. We'll do it that way.
Okay. I think I must have not been at that meeting. I don't recall this.
You might, you, or you might have been on, on Zoom at that meeting. I, I don't recall exactly. So that's the way.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
All right, eight o'clock. Wow, you're starting to fall behind, guys. All, all right, nine o'clock. Town hall hours.
Before we do that, though, we're going to do the letter to the editor.
Yes, letter to them.
Hold on. And I actually do have one other thing that I just wanted to say, just more for the public than, than really for you. Just as a, as a reminder, traditionally, we have had the cafeteria available if parents bring small children. And in the last few years, we just have not seen that terribly much. You know, we haven't had any big school issues on the warrant. So this time, Aubrey has tried to reach out through various channels, I understand, to ask, as we did last time, to see, does anyone want this? And if we haven't heard from people by Friday that they want it, then we're not going to set, set that up. It's just an extra bother that we don't need if it's not going to be used. So if there are people who are listening or picking up the mosquito or whatever, who are interested in that, we do ask them to contact the assistant town administrator and let them know.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry.
Never a problem. All right, the letter. Which version of this?
Letter is, is this with, with?
Is this, yeah, does it have changes in it?
Yes. So this, I heard from, I heard no one dissent to Travis's, and then I, I did some editing myself. So just not content structure. And that's the version you see in front of you.
Okay, because there was only one.
The idea is to, just again, run this in the mosquito this week, so we're telling people why we're having the information session.
You just scroll up a little bit. No, the other way, I'm sorry, down. Great.
Cut, print.
Done.
Good. All right.
I'm, I, just while we're still on town meeting, and just for those of you that are listening, I do want to mention that town meeting is going to be livestreamed, as it usually is. And so if people are watching from home or work or wherever, they will have the same opportunity during the information session to send comments, to text comments to that same phone number. comments, uh, to that same phone number that we're gonna provide. Cause I think we as a select board, um, really would like to get feedback about these, the key issues that are gonna be presented around the police and fire station renovations and where we are on the master plan. So just to keep that in mind if you're planning to watch from home.
Thank you. Ryan, town hour, town hall hours. Presentation, please.
Alright, so I had given the select board, uh, this, this memorandum prior, so this is not the first time you're seeing it, but I will summarize and Aubrey's on as well to summarize her findings. But the idea here is, uh, I inherited two, two sets of hours. There was the summer hours idea and then non-summer hours idea. We, we found that this this wasn't, wasn't the best approach. Uh, I assumed it was because the employees wanted it or for employees and we talked to them, they also did not enjoy shifting. Uh, mostly because of just changing in schedules, everybody plans their life and you can imagine the, the difficulties that causes. So we looked around at other communities, we looked at, um, internal data from a survey to make you a recommendation. So what, really what we're looking for here is, is your, your take, your opinion on what the hours should be. We did have some goals though. One was a consistent message to town residents, the ability to be open a little bit later. Right now, technically town hall closes at three. Uh, we'd like to extend that to four. And then a third objective is, is to make it clear what employee hours are, so we can set that expectations when, when people start. So you either work a schedule A, a schedule B, or some approved schedule C. In any case, your hours are approved and clearly articulated to you, so you, you understand the expectations.
So right now, the core working hours are nine to three. So you may come a little earlier, you may leave a little bit later, but you're here from nine to three.
The public, you're available to the public from nine to three.
Right, which means you're here, right?
Yes.
So some people may come in earlier, some people may stay later. Currently.
Correct.
Okay.
It's a little hard to read the.
Yeah, I found that hard.
Yeah, um, but, um, I miss, so are these, um, the three options? And so is this something that the staff, the, every, the staff are happy with this proposal?
Uh, if I can just chime in a little, um, so apologize for that. I'm not sure how that translated to such blurry images. They weren't originally like that. Um, I did send this memo. So these, yeah, so these were options that were, uh, offered, uh, to the, uh, staff members and then they could make some comment on, you know, if there's any other kind of adjustment they would need. So these are the results of those responses. And, um, most folks said that they would be willing to change their employee hours to have reduced hours on Friday. And, uh, so I also sent this memo to all the staff members about a month ago and I, I had positive responses. I think that for some departments, it might need to be a little different depending on the situation, such as with the COA with transportation needs and everything. Um, it might not be able to follow this exactly. Um, but for most employees, they do support this.
So I just, I mean, at, at the beginning of this, it said that, um, part of the reason was that people that, um, residents found it difficult to get here, um, by three o'clock. And so this is extending it to four. Was there any, any consideration? Because four doesn't really move the needle.
Yeah.
Right, um, if, if you're not, if you're working till five, three to four, was there any consideration of making it start at eight thirty so that somebody could come? Somebody could come in in the morning, um, and, and get something done prior to going into work? Also, contractors, it might be more helpful if it's open at eight thirty rather than nine. That's the only thing that popped out at me. All of these options, you know, didn't really seem to address that access issue as much. I don't know who's that directed to.
Not to me.
So we could also look into that. It seems like there was always a standard that it started at nine o'clock. Um, but we could consider, you know, starting a little earlier, or, you know, as you see in this memo, folks would start either at eight o'clock or eight thirty. So if we did have at town hall hours start at eight thirty, right now, this, we do, having this new structure would give us additional public hours, but that would increase it more for that morning access for residents and contractors.
Yeah, and just to be clear, I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest it eight thirty if it hadn't said that most people were here between eight and eight thirty anyway.
Right.
Let's make it six.
For those contractors, they wanna get here before they have to go to the job at seven thirty.
Um, Aubrey, do you have any idea, um, for towns that are sort of comparable in size? Whether they have a schedule that has like one day of the week where the town hall is open later till, you know, say six or seven PM? Is that something that?
We had addressed that with the department heads in a previous department head meeting and our understanding was that it never really was useful. The folks never came during that one late day. And so there was a lot of pushback immediately about how, offering that. Um, I don't have it in front of me now, but there have been, there has been some research even done by this town of, uh, comparable towns that have shorter days Fridays, if not Fridays completely off, um, by just having longer days during the week. So it does seem like it's pretty common. But that is why that option was not on this is because, um, on this calendar year, um, we were told that that has been attempted in this town hall and it did not actually provide any benefit and contractors and residents weren't actually going during those available hours.
I would think that open meeting law would be impacted by that if we didn't have somebody like the town clerk on Friday, uh, that forty-eight hour,
Hosting requirement?
Requirement for mu- anything that, you know, it would kill anything that you would wanna do on Monday or Tuesday, actually Tuesday, isn't.
What are you saying? If you close it? It is posted earlier.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying that extends, it makes it, it's an extra burden for every single committee that have to do that calculation and to figure out how far in advance that they have to post.
Just want to ask a quick question about the employee hours. So they have an option of eight to four or eight thirty to four thirty. The only reason why they would pick eight thirty to four thirty would be if they wanted to leave early on Friday?
No, they always leave early.
But in one case, they're working thirty-five hours and the other case, they're working forty hours, right?
It's the same. Four days, I think. Right, it's four days. Those, one and two are the four days, right? And then everybody works a half day Friday, right?
Yes.
Now, everybody basically works the same. I mean, Aubrey's numbers are a little off, I guess, but somewhere in the eight thirty to nine, somewhere in the three thirty to four to make thirty-five hours, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure this should do thirty-five hours.
Yeah, what you offer is thirty-five, but your example at the top of the page where you say employee working hours are generally eight thirty to four would be like thirty-seven hours if that was true. So people must, basically people work at thirty-five, right, Aubrey?
Yeah, so this is a general, so that's what it is, but the, the days vary, but that's generally when the office is covered, has coverage.
So back to, I guess, Kate's question or whoever raised it. I, it sounds like staying late is not a good, not proven to be useful, but is an early morning useful? Does anybody have any? Is there any comparable town where they have an early morning opening so contractors can get there or is that, would that be similarly not well, uh, attended?
The, the problem with small towns is you have to cover each department like a big town does.
Right.
So a lot of the big towns have and cities have more flexibility because of the staffing. So here, one personnel means you're, you're shutting down the department.
Right.
So the, the issue I had when I first started here to create accountability was to understand why people work what they do and it was not clear and still isn't to me, why schedules were created the way they were. I'm sure at some point it was clear, but every department is different and we're really asking you not necessarily to take these recommendations, even though these are our strong recommendations, but to tell us what, what you would like so that we can.
Okay, so there's a, there's an issue that I didn't appreciate. There's, there's a consistency issue where people will know these are the opening times. Doesn't matter what, whether you're going for building permit or a dump sticker or whatever, these are the open times, right? And then there's the notion that you work a little longer of a day and you can get, you can leave early on a Friday, which who doesn't like leaving early on a Friday?
Yeah, I think that also endedly has long-term.
Yeah, okay. No, I'm, I'm fine with that. Personally, I'm fine with it.
Aubrey mentioned looking at evening hours and how that wasn't, people didn't really respond to that or that we weren't getting used or something to that effect. But have you done any research on the Fridays as far as how much people are using town hall? Is it, does it drop off a cliff after noon on Friday? I'm sure in the summer, but, uh, but I'm just wondering if anyone's looked at the actual, have you ever monitored how many people come in?
Yes. I don't, I don't have scientific, I mean, we could gather, but there's not much traffic on Fridays and most employees have some type of arrangement where they're not here anyways. So there's an expectation um, around town hall that, that functions are diminished. Currently.
What do you mean that most employees are not here anyway on Friday?
Not every employee's thirty-five hours. We have a lot of part-time employees, we have twenty-five hours, we have boards and committees that set their own hours. So that there isn't a lot of consistency for, for residents. So what ends up happening is the people that are here direct people around or cover for them, which doesn't provide a lot of clarity or customer service.
Okay.
So is it expected that employees won't be here after noon on Friday or is it optional as to whether or not they're here afternoon on Friday?
So I think, I, I wanna be more definitive, but it would be by deploy, by employee and by department. So to me, if I'm, if I'm open, my door is open and I can deal with the public. Some, some employees like thirty minutes to make sure their email is good before they're dealing with the public and some people have projects they like to do after the public hours. So if you have a person that is open when the town hall is open, then maybe you work a full day on Friday and capture that time or you work an hour or two on either side.
Okay.
So the employee hours are more flexible than the public hours in this model.
Yeah, you want certainty on the public side. These are the thirty-one hours you can come and expect to see the people you need to see.
For most departments, yep.
And, and, and what I'm seeing here would be employees would be offered, offered some options as to what their hours would be, but their core hours that they would need to be here would be between eight thirty and three thirty. If we adopted, I mean, eight thirty and four, because the public hours are until four o'clock, if that's what we adopt for the public hours.
Correct.
So everybody's here from eight thirty to four, but some people may come in a little bit early.
Well, the public hours are nine to four, right?
You have to be there for the public.
Right.
Everybody's here from eight thirty to four.
Nine, nine to four.
No, I'm talking about employee hours, not public hours.
Oh, sorry.
Right, cause we're offering them eight to four or eight thirty to four thirty. So they're nobody's,
Nobody's there.
Nobody's not here at eight thirty and, and everybody's here until four.
So really what I'm trying to accomplish with that is you're not gonna decide what hours you work that day. You set a schedule.
Right.
And if you wanna deviate from that schedule, it's approved. So for ninety-nine percent of our employees, that's not a problem. We set that expectation when they're hired, but there are some employees who take advantage, not here now currently, but it could be employees who take advantage. So there should be set expectation that people follow. Unless it's discussed, otherwise there are some jobs that need a lot of flexibility or we hire them flexible on purpose. They would be specifically exempted so that we know when the expectations are being meet, met or not. It's the point of having.
I, I have a question about one of the departments. At one point wanted to have open office, uh, you know, they wanted to set their office hours where people could come in without an appointment because they didn't wanna be interrupted during, you know, all, in, at any, so there was will that fit into the schedule? Would that department still fit into the schedule or will that, that impact them?
Good question. I, I don't have an answer to that. So the, each department that is not under your authority technically could not follow this.
The justification that particular department gave was that at least the employees reported that they were more effective and that's supporting it or not. The explanation, the justification was that they communicated that to the public and that they were more efficient because there were certain things where they just needed time to concentrate. So, okay, you know, I mean, that runs counter to this idea that everybody has the same set of rules, but it is fair to say that there are, I, I mean, I know for my personal work, I just have to cut myself, I mean, meetings like all the time and I just have to say, I'm not going to those meetings. I need to focus like for an hour or two on some task and this schedule, while it's good for the public, I think, doesn't really allow the half an hour before or after is not really sufficient time to not be not disturbed isn't really right, interrupted, right? So there's some legitimacy to that philosophy and that runs sort of counter to the one-size-fits-all.
So we're talking about the public hours here and people staff are here between eight or eight thirty. How many public citizens come in before nine o'clock requesting assistance?
It's hard to say. If we were open during that time, I think maybe they would show up.
Oh, is the door closed? Is the door locked? Okay.
Sometimes they sneak in though.
And just for my part, you know, you asked for input from us and, um, I, I, again, I'm just gonna understand from, as an employee, some of the issues and desires that are represented here. Um, but I do think trying, being open, having it be possible for the public to come in earlier than nine AM would be a good thing. And that if, I guess, you know, if we were gonna try that, I would say, you know, make it a give it a try for a certain amount of time and if you find you don't have the traffic, then change back. But I, I do think that would be a good thing to have.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard without, I'm not here, so I don't know, you know, what, what the traffic is or not, but I think if it's an issue of access to people setting a core working hours of eight thirty to three thirty and closing at noon on Friday for all public, floating that by staff. But I don't know, but I don't know. I don't actually have any statistical data to say that that's gonna move the needle as far as access for the citizens.
I also don't know how difficult it is for you know, various employees to get here earlier if people are dealing with childcare or school drop-offs or whatever.
They're all here at eight or eight thirty.
Some of them are here at seven. And six thirty in the morning.
But we don't, you're not, you're just asking for input. We're not actually gonna vote on this.
No, I do think that this does need clarity at some point though.
Oh, that we should vote on it.
I, I personally would like.
Not today necessarily, but.
Recommendation from the, our town administrator.
I think that's what we got.
What we got. Well, then, then if you have that, uh, are, are we not accepting that recommendation? I mean, what are we questioning then?
Like, I think the, the point that I made was if we're trying to make it more accessible, are we really making it more accessible by going from three to four? Or would we be making it more accessible by going from nine to eight thirty?
So are we requesting then that Ryan hit maybe do a pilot? But you know, that means a lot of employees are involved. I mean, that doesn't.
I asked Ryan, my, my request was asking Ryan, you know, to talk to employees to see if they thought that that might move the needle.
Let's, but can you get that information for us and then we can?
This would be eight, eight thirty to three thirty with a nine to twelve or eight thirty to?
Eight, eight, eight thirty to three thirty would be public hours. And then, but still, but still closing on Friday at twelve.
Not changing the working hours, just the public hours.
You know, I, I, I would say nine to twelve on Friday is probably fine. But then the rest of the hours, you know, employee hours have, just have to work around those. They clearly would need to be here from eight thirty to three thirty. And, and I guess nine to twelve on Friday, unless it was eight thirty to twelve on Friday. I just don't, I don't, I don't know. That's why, that's the ask. I just don't, I don't, I don't know. That's why, that's the ask is be making a decision and a, you know, I, I only have enough information to make a really bad decision.
I, I agree. I, I think that it's like, like, I don't know enough about all the services because I haven't maybe used all of them coming into Town Hall. And so if we make a decision and there's something we haven't thought of, not that we haven't done that before, but, you know, we, if we, you know, that, that someone says, geez, I, I need to get a marriage license on, you know, or something, and this is like critical, and we didn't think about that. And I don't know, but I don't know what I don't know. So.
Right.
All right.
I, I very much value current, I get a lot of feedback from employees. I feel like that I listen. However, this is one of those decisions where you're really thinking five years down the road. So it's really should be about where, where the town prioritizes its service. Then it should be what, what a existing employee thinks it should be, right? Because at some point, this decision was made, and now people think that that's when Town Hall is open. And so to say, it's, it's more about service delivery than it is about, about anything. So a lot of towns our size do a four-day work week because they can't hire anybody. And so that four-day work week is something that a lot of people are willing to give up or to go for, for less money because it helps them with their life, right? So a lot of small towns cover for lack of pay by having that, that four-day work week. And then the town adjusts. So there are, there are conversations here about what, what you want to staff. And then we, we can tell you whether or not we can staff it. But every new hi, employee hired will be told this is the schedule. So eventually it becomes correct. And we can work around existing staff with anything. So I'm really asking, what do you think the town would want? How do you think?
My gut reaction is hours outside of nine to five when people may be working. But that's, it's just a gut reaction. It's not based upon any.
We've had, we've had, we, the, I guess, nine to three model for quite a long time, right? So everybody sort of figured out, to your point, everybody, I mean, talking about the citizens of the town have figured out some workaround, I guess, right? They have to come at lunch or.
But it starts off, residents have noted that it's difficult to come to Town Hall by three PM on weekdays.
Yeah. What did, Master Plan, did they do any survey on that? Did that pop up? I, I mean, I, I, I do like Nathan's suggestion of eight-thirty to three-thirty. That just puts a half an hour at each end for the moment. And you could just see what kind of tra, traffic you get. Like you get more people in the early side that, that'll inform you a little bit about people's sort of pattern. You could even ask them to fill out a little poll when, you know, you get a little slip of paper that you ask people to fill out when they come. Would you prefer, you know, earlier, later, you know, get a little data? I, I agree. I don't think there's any problem with the, the Friday thing. Do you find, another question, Ryan, maybe you haven't asked it is, do you have, like the thing I mentioned a few minutes ago? Do employees ever come to you and say, Ryan, I really need to work on this project? Can I like not deal with the public then? Or do you ever get that where people just want some quiet time to work on something that not be interrupted? Or is everybody sort of combinated the ebb and flow of customers coming?
I mean, I, I just don't think you take one of these positions if you don't expect more interaction. I mean, I'm.
Well, it's not, not wanting public, like, Julie, if I could ask you, I mean, how often in your, I know you have a lot of things I'm sure that you have to really focus on. Are you able to do it during the day, or do you find that you get interrupted by people coming with stuff? Well, okay. Yeah.
And you wear headphones.
It's for you, Travis.
Saw you coming.
Anyway, I, you know, I, I believe, try it and see what you get for, you know, I, I'm okay trying it. We might as well explore it.
Well, I think what we were, well, I would suggest running this by the staff and see what kind of response you get to opening.
Well, run it by the staff and try it if they're not opposed. And if it doesn't work, then we go, you know, we start again. A lot of these things are like moving furniture around in the house. You know, you move the bed over to that side and you say, oh, you know, it was really better where it was. You know, you, you put it, you drag it back. It's not like it's graven and granite and that we can't undo what we've, you know, and sometimes you have to try things.
Yeah, we don't want to do it too, too much though, because people come here and then there's no service. I think another option, I mean, it's not like binary here, right? If, if currently it's nine to three and the proposal was making it nine to four, I was saying, well, what if it's eight-thirty to three-thirty, keeping it the same? You know, I, I, I'm not sure that it would, you know, a half an hour increase, you know, it could be eight-thirty to three. It doesn't have to be till three-thirty.
What I liked about your suggestion is that you're running a little sampling, an anecdotal sampling of whether you get more traffic in the eight-thirty to nine slot or the three, three to three-thirty slot, which is an indication of people's preference to come later or earlier. And then let's say you get much more traffic at the eight-thirty to nine than the other side of the day. Then you may say, gee, why don't I try eight to three? Because it's, you know, it appears that people really want that earlier part. I mean, that's kind of a way of getting data that's not very invasive. And, you know, we just announce that we're trying, we're trying different Town Hall hours and let them know. Just let them know what you're doing. I mean, we don't need to keep it a secret. We're really interested in your feedback about whether you'd like early or later. And please, if you do come early or late, tell the person you're interfacing with that you like that. Or you don't, you know, I mean, we can get data in easy ways.
Yeah, just, I mean, from a completely selfish perspective, I think, if, and then yes. From a completely selfish perspective, I, I commute into Boston. I, I commute, I don't work from home every day. I'm not at home. If I need to come into Town Hall, you know, getting here at three or four is a whole lot harder than doing it early in the morning. So if, if Town Hall is open at eight-thirty, you know, I can get here right, right at eight-thirty and I'm only like an hour, an hour, an hour and a half late to work, not, not like, you know, having to take half my, half my afternoon off.
And you missed the window. All right, let's move on because we are falling behind on our schedule now. Town Administrator's report.
All right, um, I have some hefty items in here, so I'm, I'm going to skip the, the updates, except to say, um, we're working on the conference rooms to include this room. And, uh, we are working through a lot of our HRs. You can see in the ATA report, a lot of it has been discussed. Moving right on to the policy discussion. So in your packet, the Town Hall use policy, this came from a request we had. It was a hypothetical request, but a request that may come before you to use, use Town Hall. So we thought that would be a good time to update your Town Hall use policy. I, um, ran this by, by David to offer a recommendation to you. And, uh, inside your packet was his version and then a, a clean version that I, that I worked on with him to recommend to you. So the Town Hall use policy is how you want this building used in particular by people who are not staff or not boards and committees. So these third party, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, David?
Um, no, that's fine.
Okay. What I, did I read this correctly? That, um, the proposal is that we would allow nonprofit groups that were not Town Boards or to use, uh, space here, but not for profit. Did I read that correctly?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. So it's no charge or?
Uh, not recommended to charge, no.
Okay.
I did have some comments. If you want comments now.
I have comments too.
So, uh, I'm hoping that I read the, the right one. It was revision nine, twenty-nine, twenty-three, the first one in the policy thing.
You want to look?
Okay.
They were both the same, weren't they? I think they were the same. Didn't show up markup is what you were trying to do, right?
Yeah, and I don't know why, but.
So the first thing is in one point two. Um, I think one point two is confusing because it says the use will not be granted for nonprofit groups, organization, religious or lobbying groups. Then the next sentence says, use may be granted by approval of the Town Administrator for the use by local nonprofit groups and organizations one time only. It's.
So the distinction was for-profit and non-profit.
It's hard to read.
The first line there.
For, for-profit will not be granted for.
Should probably, we should probably lead with the, we, we should probably lead with the second sentence and then.
Okay, so I missed the double four.
Yeah, well.
Okay.
And I want to mention in rereading it, I, instead of one time only, we should say on a case-by-case basis.
This gets back to the same thing though, that we talked about in, you know, like people selling things or talking about things at town meeting. If we open this up to any nonprofit, we're opening it up to any nonprofit.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I just think we need to be really, really careful about that. And I, I would propose we not do that, that this is, this is for town or citizen use and not for other organizations.
So for town-based nonprofits? Well, I'm just.
Um, wants to do a function in here or something, or IT or what, you know, I'm trying to think of an example.
That would be okay because it's a town department. But let's say the cultural council, which is not an official.
Cub Scouts.
Deaf, yeah, right.
I think the larger issue is one that you're a fan of, Kate, which is if we're gonna have a virtual community center, we got to figure this out, not just for here, but a police station wants a community room and,
Right.
you know, the school has a community room. I mean, the school, by the way, has gone through this already. We should probably check in with them on how they worked it. But those groups get it, those groups can ask to use the room. So, um, you know, it hasn't been a rush to, you know, the Adolf Hitler Society and all those things have not rushed to have their meetings. So, you know, it's in theory, Nathan's correct, that anybody can use it. But I think the larger issue, like I said, is how do we get at the virtual community center?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So then the next is one point three. The Select Board reserves the right to allow the use of Town Hall for purposes not inclusive of, of one point one, meaning that it could be somebody else, right? The Select Board may vote, by vote of the board at a public meeting, may authorize the use of Town Hall for any purpose deemed to be in the interest, best interest of town. I'm just wondering if at their sole discretion should be included in there, right? It's like when we decide that's it, you know, there's, there's no argument.
Some of this was legacy, right, Ryan?
If there should be, um, precedence for, for these rooms. You know, and, and what I was thinking was staff get it, staff, staff get it first and then board, you know, and then boards, and then anybody outside. Um, just to, to set that precedent so that, you know, staff aren't getting kicked out. Um, and boards aren't getting kicked out or not able to do something because of an outside, an outside entity. And then another comment was, I think we should do an outlook. And then my last comment, um, I'm sorry, second to last comment. Uh, about the key. Should that be available only to Carlyle citizens who are on a board?
Sorry, about the what, the key being a quick Town Hall. Oh, the Town.
Being able to get it from the police station.
Right. Who, who do they give it to? I would think it should be only somebody who's on a board.
And then if you, if you did have a, uh, non-board group that we had approved to use it and it's after hours, how do they get in?
I don't think we should have non-board or staff people in here after hours without somebody here.
I, I would say, uh, we should probably have the board send their, their edits or comments and we can bring it back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. There, there were a couple of other, um, places under reservation. Uh, the scheduling of the rooms shall be the responsibility of the Town Administrator or their designee. Currently, the clerk, Town Clerk is doing that. Is that your designee then?
No.
So, um, okay.
I changed that or suggested changing it because I don't think it needs to be a Town Clerk responsibility.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. But, um, but then, uh, the last line, uh, where it says Town Administrator or Town Administrator may waive forty-eight hour reservation period. That needs to be fixed.
And, and I can send this.
You know what? That was me replacing that. No, it should just be once. It should be once.
Yes.
I can send my comments if you send it to me in Word format. Um, it's just hard to comment in, in PDF. I did just want to say in, in three point, in three point three, that when it's saying what's prohibited, I think we should mention something about harassment and things like that as being strictly prohibitive. We're saying no smoking.
Hmm, yeah.
Is it harassing would be.
And take multiple measures.
Yeah, okay.
Trying to make it a bylaw ordinance or law, but it's not.
I'm going to bring up the rotary permission form here. So there's a permission form that, an online permission form. Uh, but then there's another one that's on, online. I'd like Ryan to just address that one briefly, the rotary permission form.
Is this to be there with a sign?
No, it's to put a sandwich boards.
Yeah, okay.
Right?
Cable that, right, because we.
No, this is something else.
Yeah, it's a big, you wanted, oh, that was the previous one.
So is this the request that's currently before us?
I'm sorry?
Are you talking about the requests that's before us or?
Yes, well, the, well, you wanted me to bring up rotary permission forms, so I'm bringing up.
What was the specific permission?
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry.
Orchestra.
Okay.
The void.
There have been some mission, yeah.
Who would like to put their sign, their traditional sign up? And, um, sent in a late request for this meeting and it's, I think, in two weeks. So we're looking to get that approved by the board.
Okay, so that's a, that's a sandwich board. And usually the only sandwich boards that are allowed in the rotary are ones that we approve.
Well, listen, let me just say.
Are they a banner this year?
Um, they, I don't know if they're also doing a banner, but, um, this was for a sandwich board.
Okay.
I would just say, because I've had lots of experience putting signs out on the rotary for different groups. It doesn't go to, through the Select Board. The process has always been you just went to the assistant to the Select Board and she would the schedule and see if it was open. And if it was, she'd just write you in for it. So, which is different than usage of a town property or.
Yeah, I got it.
Come here.
Yeah, what does come to us is the banners.
Yeah, right.
And they, I thought they always had a banner before.
Anyway, I'm, I'm comfortable letting the Savoyard put up a sandwich board.
Yeah. They, they've really, you're right. They were always, Savoyards have always put a banner up.
They're going with a sandwich board now.
Maybe they're just saving money.
Do we have to vote that or just agree? Just agree, it's okay?
If it's just a sandwich board, I don't know that we have, we, you're right, you're right. We didn't do the sandwich board. I, that's why I was surprised, um, Ryan, that, I thought you were talking about this new billable, application form that you had, that you wanted me to bring up.
Well, that's different than just putting a sandwich board publicizing an event. The, the discussion we had a while back was about a person standing there with a sign, right? And wanting to leave the sign when, when they were gone.
Right.
And shove it into the ground.
No, actually, they shoved it in the ground while they were still there because it couldn't hold it.
That's the stuff side of that, but it's not really materially different than the sandwich board.
What, how is that different?
So, uh, there is a larger issue that we should not tackle at nine fifty that Mr. Laboring frequently raises and is sort of raising again tonight, which is, you know, the slippery slope movement, right? Once you let, you got to be prepared for the Adolf Hitler rally sign and everything else. But, you know, so we have to take that up at some point. We, we kick that can down the road.
It was a free.
So what would you like me to do with the Savoyard Light Opera Sandwich Board?
Let them put it on.
Put it up.
Follow the normal process, which I think Jen decided if, if there, if there was room for it.
Yeah.
So call Jen.
I suspect there is room for it because that's not been up yet.
Yeah.
We should codify that.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm not sure that I.
I agree.
For the Select Boards, what signs you want up?
Well, no, you're broadening it. We're, we're giving you specific authorization for this occasion. We have a larger issue. We declined to take up a month or two ago that we eventually have to take up.
Well, it has to be.
Sandwich board, unattended signs, use of the Town Hall by.
The policy on sandwich boards is actually already written and very clear. It's only Town, um,
Events or?
Events.
Savoyard a Town Event? Savoyard a town event?
It was in a town building.
Yes, he was.
Said it's crystal clear, Madam.
Yeah, okay, we'll have.
We have to take it up.
We have to look at the thing.
All right, so there's two more, two more policies in the, in the packet for you to review. I don't think we want to take up tonight, but they are, and I'll send you the word documents as well.
That'd be great.
But these are the continuation of our financial policies review two, uh, tax enforcement and revenue turnover, uh, revenue turnover being very, I mean, they're all important, but revenue turnover sets some of our auditing principles. So the point of these is, is to get through them. So I'm, I'm looking for comments so that we can uh try to, try to publish these. There's about fourteen behind them and our goal is to complete them by June thirtieth. So um, we'll need comments between meetings in order, I think, to get through fourteen.
And are these um, the ones that are in here now, are these the current policy on the books here or?
We don't have.
We don't have them at all. Okay, so these have been drafted by staff.
Well, they were first drafted by the Department of Revenue and then we tailored them and FinCom reviewed them and the Fin team reviewed them and now the select board needs to review them.
Okay, yeah. So what's here has been re- reviewed and approved by the, the bodies you just mentioned?
Yes.
Okay. Um.
All right, so um.
Okay, these are my comments.
Jake, you heard from him tonight. His initial efforts include data gathering, um, as evidenced by tonight's presentation. He's also working for Julie and the Board of Health, digitizing some septic plans and helping with uh GM, GIS data by digitizing and working through some of that data. Also, um, you saw tonight, we're working on some professional development for him to include, he got uh some invitations to, to go to STEM and MMA conferences for free to try and entice him to not go federal and to come local. And after tonight's meeting, I'm sure he's going to say yes.
Yeah.
Right.
Fascinating, right?
Yeah.
And so, so worthwhile.
I'll go to free cash at last and, and be quick about it. So some upcoming discussion points. The town of Littleton, through a former town administrator of yours, reached out to see if we'd be willing to share town meeting electronic devices. Uh, Peggy agrees this would be a good thing and uh, so does Wayne, the moderator.
I think we should do it.
Yep.
We'll bring that up at the next meeting for a vote. Uh, I'm also going to go over financial forecast model, so I'll say well that for a second. The annual town meeting, not to be discussed tonight necessarily, but um, although we set our date for April twenty-ninth, Concord then set their date for the twenty-ninth, even though we tried to get in front of them. So uh, we have that problem currently, if it's a problem. And then um, I met with the Finance Committee last night, so after the financial forecast presentation, the capital plan, uh, looking to have them come joint to your next meeting to discuss budget goals. And I know um, you'll have some strong feelings about that, so just trying to put that on your radar. And I'll do uh town employee recognition and then go towards the, the two data points. So there's a file in your packet from Julie's grant work. Uh, she got so many that one of them surprised her.
One of them's embargoed and it shouldn't be uh, talked about.
All right, so the ones in the packet are, she's done a lot of good work.
He has.
Um, I also want to mention Sue Thomas and so did Julie, reached out to recognize her work on the Green Communities Grant. So she was heavily involved in the initial part of that grant process. Uh, I'd like to thank Gretchen, Jim and Tom for their work on this year's recycling dividends program. We received almost two thousand dollars in revenue for, for point gathering. You can imagine Tom's pretty thorough with that. Gretchen can match his thoroughness and um, Jim's just cheering him on, right? He likes all the recycling and has been doing it for years. And then Tricia McGee, Linda and volunteers uh put together a successful flu shot clinic. I got my shot free of pain and uh, everybody was thrilled about the professionalism and ease of access. So it was nice to see that provided to the community free of charge. Okay, a couple things to show you. So this year, our free cash was certified by the Department of Revenue at four point six million. And I just want to show you a quick autopsy we did. This helps inform you on the free cash generation process we talked about during the capital plan and of course will inform the for, financial forecast discussion.
This is page sixty-five. That was your on the packet. Okay.
So yeah, we expected um, to, to have about twelve to thirteen percent reserve after this budget process. If you remember, we kept talking about if we spend this much, this is how much reserve we'd have left. Uh, we ended up generating about six hundred thousand, uh, about six to eight hundred thousand more than we, more than we anticipated. So I'd like to show you why. So right here at the bottom, you have remaining free cash. That's what we thought we would be um, having after the end of the budget process. And then we certified at four point six. So that leaves a gap of one point four million that, that again, I'd like to explain. So local receipt turnbacks, this is under projected revenue. So I told you, we're pretty conservative with our local receipts. We ended up turning back about five hundred thousand, which is a little bit more than one percent, um, which is our target. So our estimate and our actuals, it was seventy percent of actuals on our estimate. So we could increase that a little bit more. We wanted to be less conservative, but you would generate less free cash.
I don't think you want to say we turned it back. We, we got that more.
Received it, right?
We, we received it, you know, in excess of what we had budgeted because we were conservative in our budget. It's confusing if you say we turned it back.
Change the language. And then uh, we also moved the building department and sticker fund into the operating budget. So that accounts for the two hundred and twenty thousand. Taxes, back taxes, we collected a hundred thousand. That, that's a one-time thing. We, we, we don't anticipate being able to do that every year. And then some ancillary funds from the state. In terms of what departments turned back, there was four hundred and forty-five thousand in last year's budget or a little over one percent. And then closeout of reserves is um, the difference between in, in capital expenditures. Let's say we were going to buy a truck. This was money that we didn't spend in that process. That's seventy-two thousand. Um, and then the, the washing of accounting, as she explained it to me, ended up with a net gain of, of ninety thousand. So what is replicable there is about nine hundred and forty-five thousand, the local receipts, uh, under projection of revenue and the expense turnback. So
expense?
We said we wanted to generate between six and eight hundred thousand and we ended up generating about nine hundred and fifty thousand.
Of the expense turnbacks, the four hundred and forty-five thousand, what generally, who are the big departments or where did that come from?
Uh, you primarily. So, and not intentionally, it is um, town council, um, I, some IT funds and then the, the FinCom's reserve are the three biggest. That counts for about two hundred thousand of that. And then last year, we, we told you we moved sixty-five thousand from sticker fund that we thought was double counted. So you're left with about two hundred thousand, which is on average about where we are. I know I'm talking fast, but it is getting late. I know how you get. So the uh, financial forecast. So this is just a, just a preview because I'd like to get some feedback. This isn't the actual forecast. So if you look uh, this diagram that comes from the state shows what we're trying to accomplish here. So our financial policies and multi-year forecasts combining with our capital investment plan to create the annual budget. So just a preview, uh, trends indicate that Carlyle's spending is outpacing its revenue, meaning either decreased services or higher taxes in outlying years. Now, this is not an immediate crisis, but something, some trends to, to look at. So for example, a three percent average tax bill increase would equal a budget cut or less services available from departments over five years. And over ten, the trend line gets even worse. So the reason for that is we are adding more to our tax levy than we are taking in in revenue because our only revenue sources is local taxes and state aid and local receipts. So establishing a consensus on revenue projections would enhance our model. And assumptions here guide your available spending power. So what does that mean? Tightening revenue assumptions would equal less cash for capital, but more cash for operating. And then loosening your revenue with some, oh, I'm sorry, I have it the other way.
No, yeah, that was right.
So loosening your revenue assumptions then would equal more spending power for your operating. So that's something that you should be intentionally thinking about.
Depends on what you mean by tightening and loosening. I was reading tightening as being more accurate, being closer to ninety than to seventy percent of revenue.
If you're tight with your revenue projections, then you're going to generate more free cash because you're going to be under projecting your revenue.
Right.
If you um, loosen them, you'll have more for your operating budget, but again, less free cash. This should say more free cash. I apologize.
Don't use.
Uh, and then what, what really is needed for you, I think, is to establish a metric to guide budget goals. So if you use average tax bill, which I think is a, is a really useful and powerful tool, the, the efficacy of the data over time isn't going to be there because um, because of assumptions. So it'll look more conservative than it needs to be, which could then create, you know, again, tightening of revenue assumptions, et cetera. But it's the most translatable to what, what you're trying to do. Uh, if you use average operating budget spending increase, it's really easy to understand, but it's not, it's not tied to much except that um, of a perception, like three percent budget growth is good, but it's not tied directly to some goal. And then if you strictly adhere yourself to revenue, you're going to greatly reduce your services. So you, you probably do need to outspend your revenue a little bit, but just do so intentionally and know the impact of that over time is eventually going to drive up taxes. So that's what the model is going to try and get you to make decisions on and show you. And I just wanted you to start thinking about which one of those appeals to you. And, and what type of policies you want there. Skip through that because it's embargoed.
Yeah, sorry.
All right. And then here is your next agenda. So looking at uh, financial forecast presentation joint with FinCom and then talk about budget goals. Uh, my evaluation, which should be fun for everyone. And then go over some of those select board policies that we talked about tonight, uh, maybe make some final decisions there. And then that is some, some big things. So we're expecting those to be long conversations.
I know it's getting late, but just um, how, what should we expect in terms of the town administrator evaluation? Is this your report based on all the input you've gotten from different select board members? Okay.
That actually won't pick one. This is wow.
So it's not a conversation. It's not a back and forth.
You might.
Okay.
People might want to say, you know, really agree and, you know, pick out one thing that they wanted to say, but it's not a conversation.
Um, I think that we, we, I just want to make sure there's enough time in the schedule between now and then, because I think what we had talked about, you know, you gave us your self-reviews. We were going to give you, you know, sit down with you, send it to Kate. You were going to consolidate it and then you were going to review the draft with Ryan prior to it being public.
Correct. And I would also send it to you all.
Because meetings are done next Wednesday, right? So the last of your meetings with.
They all scheduled?
Individual, yeah.
Have people scheduled them? I haven't, I haven't scheduled mine yet. I wanted to get you guys scheduled first, give you all first dibs and then, oh.
I scheduled like, as he came.
I'm scheduled, scheduled, we scheduled. Oh, okay. So I'll just get them. Sorry about that.
Just while the word, that really quickly.
I just want to make sure that it, it, so you're going to draft it and then are we going to see it? Or is, but Ryan is definitely going to see it before it's public.
Right.
Okay, so he can provide his input back.
And so, and of course, the sooner you guys give me your evaluations, the more time I have to draft it well written.
Yeah, well, we have to give it to you right after a meeting or else we haven't discussed anything during that meeting.
So I just want to follow up on that because I'm, I'm getting prepared for Wednesday afternoon. Um, so is the expectation that each of us is going to take the template, that evaluation template with the scoring one through four and go through each of the categories and provide a, a number? And also write comments.
I've written comments just as.
Yeah, okay, but we're, we're doing that after we have our conversation with Ryan or we come into the meeting with, our individual meetings with Ryan, having done that. So it's a sort of a sharing, uh, you know, back and forth.
So this came, this request came from me. So I just asked that you didn't finalize that review until you talked to me about it. So you can have it most or all written and not change it if you want. I just wanted to talk to you about it first.
No, I'm asking a little bit different question, which is like for our individual meetings. Is it helpful for us to have completed the evaluate our, just on our own opinion? We complete the evaluation form, giving it scores and, and comments that we have that to give you when we're having our meeting with you? Or is the expectation that um, we have a conversation based on your self-evaluation and then after that, when you're not there, I'm going through and completing my evaluation?
I think it's best if you, I think it's best if you've done it before so you can talk it through.
That's what I would think too.
But just go into it with the mind that it is a discussion.
Right.
So things may come up in that, in that discussion that makes you change it.
Right.
And then you'd want to send it back to him so he knows what, you know, you, you would be discussing what that change was with him. Because some, sometimes you just don't remember something and, and so you want to, you want to change your evaluation because it's, it's a discussion.
But we're really providing the evaluation to Kate, who then takes that and.
But he, but he sees the individual ones. We're giving him individual evaluation.
I have individual evaluations. At the discussion and then back then he's back to me and I summarize those evaluations.
Right, so I think it's, we write it, we go over it with Ryan. We may amend, we, you know, we may edit it, give it to Ryan and then we send it to Kate once Ryan says, yep.
Yeah, I agree with.
Because there can't be any surprises in that final report to Ryan.
Exactly. Exactly. Okay, and Ryan has a chance also then to respond to whatever evaluation you have with him. That's, it's, it's a back and forth.
Yeah. Good. I think we also said on this.
We, well, see, um, Travis is saying he, he can send his even before he meets with them.
I, I would do that.
Yeah.
Buying us Thursday morning.
Right, if you're ready, you have it ready ahead of time, you said.
I have something to talk about.
And he's had a chance to look at, think about it. Yeah.
Okay. All right, it is.
One other thing on this agenda, just a small thing, but didn't we say tonight that we're going to sign off on the uh, this boards and committee thing at the next meeting?
What was?
The boards and committee outline, you know, for appointments?
Well.
Would we say that that was going to get redone and redone?
Cleaned up.
And then voted on at the next meeting?
That is, yes, but.
Okay, so just add that to the agenda.
Yeah.
Suck it in as liquid.
Okay.
Yes, financial town hall and.
For today.
Yeah, sorry, boards and committees.
We've got a little, you have twenty minutes.
Okay. Um.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Uh, the review, the minutes and warrants, were there any questions? We had no minutes. We had no minutes, but the warrants is what I was wondering if anybody had any questions? Any further community input? Well, there's a screen. There's still people there. And seeing none, I.
I'll adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you very much, everybody.